See you in a couple of weeks.
All right, I got seven o'clock. Anybody else got the same time?
Yes.
Order on City Clayton City Council meeting for January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy two thousand and twenty-two to all of you. I'm glad you're all here. And Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Sure, Councilmember Diaz.
Present.
Councilmember Juan.
Here.
Councilmember Wolf.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
Here.
Mayor Cloven.
I'm here, too. I would go to item number two now, and we have the meeting protocol video. Janet, can we have something spectacular up in line for us?
Due to COVID nineteen, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the A B three sixty-one, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is also being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council presenter staff and other speakers by name, and ask that they speak clearly and state their names before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by the Clayton City Clerk by five P M. Today will be entered into the record but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Thank you, Janet. And we'll go to item number three. If you don't mind, Councilman Diaz, please do us the honors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Onward to the consent calendar, item number four. Is there anybody who would like something pulled for discussion in the consent calendar? Jeff. Councilman Juan, please.
Yeah, I'm looking at it here. Hold on.
Excellent.
While looking that up, if I could just say that on item D, which is the amendment to the Harris Agreement, there are a couple of dates that are not consistent. We will make them all consistent in the final version. They should all be March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. So just in case you noticed any discrepancy in the dates, we'll get those fixed. Those were inadvertently not all aligned on the same date, which they should be.
I actually did have a comment on item D, but it wasn't about the date. So do we have an idea of, because what we're doing now is moving to a time and materials billing arrangement versus a fixed cost. Do we have an idea of what a pro forma cost would be had we been on a time and materials basis for the prior, like, one or two-year look back period?
I haven't done a comparison over, say, a twelve-month or a rolling twelve-month period. I do know that, you know, for many months when I started, we were well below kind of the dollar or the number of hours that would have equaled, per se, the retainer. But in the last maybe five months, we've been well over the hours that equaled the retainer at the hourly rate. So I think it depends on the timeframe that you're looking at, whether we would have been ahead or behind, or what that would have looked like over that time. I can say that for the level of service and responsiveness that I have been looking for, it's clear we're going to have to manage that very carefully, not to have a significant increase.
Yeah, and I guess that's where I was going, just to get a sense for where we expect it to end up. Like, do we have a projection based on our, you know, desired utilization? Because I think in the early period that you were referring to, where we were under our retainer amount, it was probably because we were receiving really poor service, right? And so now we've hounded them enough that we're getting better service, and hence they will charge us more. So I guess the question really is like, how much of an impact do we think that's going to make?
You know, I think it's hard to say. I mean, if if we've been at ten thousand approximately a month under the retainer for the last year, I think that if we keep a fairly robust level of service, if we don't manage it carefully, it could be up to fifteen thousand a month. But that's just sort of my sense based on the number of hours. I haven't actually gone back and done a calculation. But I can say that, you know, in the probably two months ago, when I looked at the bill from Harris, based on the hours in that month, we would have been at twice. So we would have been at twenty for that month, based on the hourly rates. But I think that was, I don't, I wouldn't call that a representative month, right? But I could see easily, without managing it carefully, carefully, we could be at fifteen thousand a month. And that's not sustainable at, you know, within our current budgeted resources.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was a question on that item. I, another question on item F. This is the Witcher project. Can you, can you give a little background on to the nature of the change order and the need for it, like what the main drivers were causing the need for the change order? And what we're doing about it?
Sure, sure. So while I am, let me just turn to the right page, because that will make it easier. I'm also going to ask Janet if she can bring in Mark Nassar from the attendee. That will help me as I will give you the general view, and then if there's more specific sort of more technical questions, Mark can answer those from the city engineer perspective. But basically, it came down to conditions on the ground that were not anticipated at the time we put the bid and the engineer's estimate together. This included some cases where the, when the contractor got out to the field, the slopes, for example, that we thought would be in compliance, weren't going to be in compliance. We had to redesign kind of the whole curb ramp for that one cut, because the slopes weren't them. In some cases, it was because sidewalks or other sort of accessory concrete wasn't in good enough shape to, you know, create a reasonable path of travel. So there was a lot more concrete work that needed to be done, whether that's, you know, sort of in the gutter or on the sidewalk, particularly on sidewalks. We did find that a fair amount. And, you know, that, that occurred in small amounts, a lot of places, and in, you know, moderately significant amounts in a couple of places where we really had sidewalks that, that needed to be fixed up. There was a small amount because we added two curb ramps that we hadn't anticipated for areas where we are planning to pave, and so those have to be brought up, but weren't initially identified, although they, they probably should have been. And then we had a little bit of cost associated with wanting to try to match the new concrete to existing concrete as well as we could, because otherwise you end up with really sharp demarcations of old concrete and new concrete, because it's, you know, sort of the new concrete is that, you know, bright, bright white, and it looks, you know, kind of creates a patchwork effect that we were trying to avoid. So those were, and those are on the second and third page in the staff report as well, and there's a summary of those. But the overarching theme is when we got on the ground with the contractor and the construction inspector, construction manager, what we found was that we hadn't gotten a, an adequate sense of what was really on the ground before it was bid and priced. And so every one of those changed conditions caused additional work to be done. And Mark can either correct me if I've said anything wrong, or if you have any more detailed questions, Councilmember, he can certainly answer those.
Just one more. So would you, would it, would it be fair to say that the, with the change order and the work that's going on, is it accurate to say that we have brought the city into compliance? Or are we just isolating the areas that we looked at, and there's potentially more areas that would need to also get additional work if we do an adequate examination?
And this is solely related to the curbs associated with this project, which were selected essentially concurrent with the paving sections that were, were selected. There are many other curves in the city that are, to varying degrees, not in compliance with ADA standards, either because they were put in at a time where they met the standards at the time, but they no longer meet the standards, because some of those standards have changed. Some because they've deteriorated since they were put in, even if they were in compliance. And some just probably weren't constructed correctly. We do have a an inventory that was done a little over two years ago of all of our curbs, including an identification of what's there, what's missing, and as well as, you know, kind of pictures and photographic evidence. We need to take that and create an ongoing program to try to speed up the, the pace at which we can get to those curves. But we have quite a bit of work left to do.
Okay, no, that's very helpful. Thank you. Does it present a risk to the city if we know that there are things out of compliance? Or do we have some kind of, I don't know how to describe it, safe harbor in, like, fixing these things in a certain amount of time? Or is it, are we just kind of crossing our fingers a little bit?
It's, I would say frankly, it's a little bit of both. The city has to have a plan to move forward with curb improvements and ADA improvements in general. And, you know, we have this list. We've said we will address them as they come with our paving projects. So we know we always are moving those up in priority as we get to those paving projects. And if anyone, if we get a specific complaint regarding a particular curb that somebody says, hey, you know, there's, there's a problem with this curb ramp, or there's a problem with this curb, we, we will inspect it. But also, one of the things that we haven't had a very good way to do in the past is do those sort of one-off repairs. If somebody said, hey, this is dangerous. The change that will go into effect, I think, Friday of this week, which was the change in the Public Works Contracting Authority under the Uniform Cost Accounting Act, that will allow us to move more quickly on those small ones, so we can get them addressed, you know, within a very small maintenance budget, but at least the contracting piece won't be this, you know, big production to get those small things done. You know, I, I think that one thing that we absolutely need to do is continue to explore avenues of additional funding to try and move that curb ramp program ahead more quickly. You know, we are responsible to have a plan to make those curbs ADA compliant. It probably shouldn't take forever, but it also has to be, you know, done within the context of our, of our budgetary constraints. So yes, there is some risk to us. And we just continue to try to find every avenue to address that risk going forward by trying to speed up that program.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
I, I'd like to follow up on, just help clarify, Raina, on the curbs. Back when we were looking at the parking situation over on Regency, one of the things that we noticed was pretty prevalent around town or at the fire hydrants, that the red paint striping had faded to a pink. And in some cases, it really faded to near white. Is that included in this as well?
No, that's not related to the ADA, per se. That would more just be sort of, I would call, general pavement maintenance for safety purposes. If those areas are identified, we can, that's actually a lot easier to fix than a curb ramp, quite frankly. So if those are identified, they can be submitted to me, and we can, you know, make sure that those get addressed.
Well, one of the things that could take place between the maintenance staff as they drive around the city is just make observation and notes about the fact that some of those are there, as well as the police department as well, because it brings out a safety matter to some of the residents, so that there is no parking around the fire hydrant in case there's a fire. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
If I can add, just for clarification, I don't want the public to be misunderstanding. So many years back, the city did no longer proactively maintain red curbs due to budgetary constraints in the city's Public Works Maintenance Department. There were very selective areas that we would do, and that was mostly in the downtown, because it is state law not to park in front of a fire hydrant, regardless of whether it's red curbed or not. But we did lack resources to continue with the ongoing maintenance of red curbing. That was a budgetary constraint, was removed from ongoing maintenance services.
We need a, like a ready can of paint and a brush.
Well, it's a special type of paint.
Granted.
Yeah. But it was just a matter of lack of resources right now that we've been able to not move forward with that on a aggressive approach.
That goes without saying, but the lack of resources won't exist going on into the future.
Part of budgetary issues for the council to consider, yes.
Thank you for your input.
Duly noted that we can, you know, we'll, we'll certainly try to address any of the, those that are really a considered a safety issue for us. So thank you.
I just have a quick question before we move on from this. It's also on item number, I mean, letter F. Who is ultimately at fault then for overlooking what needed to be repaired?
That's a difficult question to answer. I think it's a combination of, there are always, first of all, let me say, there are always unforeseen circumstances when you go into construction, whether it's a building, a street, a curb, or anything else. So I think the fact that there was such a delay between the time that the project was scoped and bid and the time that it was constructed. So one, we expected some level of this. Two, there was this fairly long, two-ish year delay between when it was originally scoped and bid and when it was ultimately, you know, boots on the ground doing the project. Both of those are, I don't know, we could blame the universe, or we could blame the small spiky proteins on the outside of COVID or something, but not anybody to go after. I think the combination then of a lot of turnover on the city management side, as well as, you know, changes that were starting to brew at Harris, the combination meant that there was probably not as much oversight as there should have been, both on the city side and on the Harris side. And so I think, you know, Mark and I have spent some time talking about sort of, you know, what does this mean? What did we learn? You know, he and I, neither he nor I were involved in this when it started. And so we both have been like, yeah, we definitely, this was, should not have gone this way at all. And so, you know, I think Harris bears a share. I think the city bears a share, and I think the universe, not that you can go after the universe, but you could try.
So then, in that vein, is Harris covering some of these additional costs? Is this our portion? Are they, are they covering any of this additional cost that needs to be paid to the contractor?
The, the contractor, we are paying those costs. We haven't had a direct conversation with Harris about, you know, whether there's some potential cost share. It's looking pretty far into the past to try and identify kind of how, how that might play out. And, you know, Mark is obviously hearing this, so he and I can have a further conversation. But we haven't had that, that conversation.
If I, if I may interject, I think you've covered it very well, Raina. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. And Council Tillman, to respond to your question, it's important to note that the cost that is being paid now is the true cost of the project. What we're basically addressing now is items that should have been identified in the design phase that were not, that were discovered during construction. It's not that they were never going to get paid. This is the, the quantities are accurate. The contractor had to perform this level of effort, and that much quantity of concrete had to be applied. And so we're just basically catching up to the true cost of the, of the project.
Okay. I think what I was trying to get at with my question was whether or not there was negligence in trying to figure out what the true project was or the scope of the project and where that fault was. And if, if Harris would be paying their portion of that, because it was, it was overlooked. Not that it doesn't need to be paid. It is a true amount. But are they responsible because of any additional cost that were incurred in fixing that? And it sounds like maybe there, there aren't additional costs in fixing it. It is what it is. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Council, are there any questions, additional questions on the consent calendar items A through F? If there are none, we can open this up for public comment. If there's anyone in the public out there that would like to speak on these items that are on the consent calendar, now is your time and to raise your hand, and Janet will call upon you. Janet?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Thanks, Janet. And with that, I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the council. I would entertain a motion to pass the consent counter.
To approve, as, as is.
First by Councilmember Wolf.
I'll second.
The second from Vice Mayor Tillman. Janet, we call the roll, please.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Juan.
Hi.
Councilmember Wolf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
Hi.
Mayor Cloven.
Hi. All right, that item four is closed. We're going on to item five, which is recognitions and presentations, and we have none. And so we'll move on to item number six, which is city reports. I want to just quickly start off by saying that this year I would like city reports to reflect what not only you've done in Clayton, but also what you've done outside of Clayton, representing Clayton. I really appreciate every single one of you for your responding to city citizens and their phone calls and their messages. That's really a huge, important part of who we are and what we do as council members who are elected by our constituents. But also, it's really important to represent Clayton outside of Clayton's borders. And I know all of us do that in our own way, with our own groups. So as you are out this year and you're attending a meeting, what I would like you to focus on is, what is that meeting that you're a part of? And how is it specifically relate to Clayton and our constituents? If you can bring not only what the meeting was that you attended, but how it's specifically cogent to the people that we represent, I'd really appreciate that. And with that, let's start off with the city council reports. And Councilmember Wolf, will you go first, please?
Certainly will. Well, Happy New Year, Mayor, Council, and everybody watching and listening in. I'll be brief. I met with our city manager, also met with our mayor, and I had one meeting over the holidays, or just before the holidays, with the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy, where I have been appointed as the vice chair now going forward. So I appreciate being on that committee, and I'll report more about it with regards to this. This was more of our sum up of the year, and also an overlook of the budgetary process. So that's what this was all about. But as we get more into the weeds with it next year, or this year, I'll, I'll report more directly about how that relates to Clayton. But I will say these are, again, I've said it before, very dedicated people with a great knowledge about their position on the Habitat Conservancy and what it means for the entire region. And I, I received a note from Senator Glazer's office. They want to meet with me to give me some kind of commemoration for my services, Mayor, which is nice. I'm looking forward to that. Had a lot of nice emails from the public over the holidays, and again, with regard to my term as mayor. So I appreciate everybody took the time to do that in the city. And finally, just a PSA, the Boy Scouts Tree Recycling is coming up on Sunday, this Sunday, the ninth, January ninth, from nine A M. to three P M. throughout Clayton. They want you to put your trees on or near the curb, and they're going to swing by to pick them up. This is a fundraiser for Boy Scout Troop four eight four. And if you would like to donate, I understand they're going to leave envelopes there for you to, to donate with regards to their tree pickup. But if you would like to donate directly to them, they are at B S A Troop four eight four, P O Box sixty-two. That's six-two in Clayton, nine four five one seven dash zero zero six-two. And they take Visa, Mastercard, American Express, or they can also, you can go by PayPal at troopfoureightfourclayton@gmail.com. And that is my report. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. All right, Councilmember Juan, you're up next.
I got my third booster today, so my arm hurts and I feel sick, so. That's it for me. I had a good holiday. I was out of town.
That's an excellent PSA yourself, Jeff. Thank you very much. Councilmember Diaz, please. You're up next.
First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. It was a busy time between the mid-part of December and the first of the year for me in dealing with issues related not only to Clayton, and I'll specifically mention those, but things outside of the, the city of Clayton, the greater Contra Costa area, as well as Alameda County. First, on the fourteenth of December, I met very extensively with Councilmember Carolyn, Carolyn Overinger in Concord. She had some issues related that would affect both Concord and Clayton as related to enforcement activities with the district attorney's office, which I think is being addressed. But I'll want to make mention of that further in another item. On the seventeenth, I attended the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Holiday Event, which is a well-attended event, a lot of different city council members from throughout Contra Costa County, as well as a, a number of people involved with the posse. On the eighteenth, I attended Rees Across America. And that was an interesting event. That's one where the local chapter of the Veterans of Foreign War, led by Mark Steinberg, they placed wreaths on the graves of a number of fallen victims over time from all around the area, but they're over at the, they're over at the cemetery in Concord. And I want to make mention of one thing. Two representatives from the city of Concord were both invited up to address the attendees. That was not afforded to the city of Clayton. Don't know why. But it was overlooked, in my view, very seriously. One of the reasons is, is that there was a lot of discussion nearby where I was standing about non-related veterans issues, specifically about planning for an item we're talking about tonight. And that was the matter of what are we going to do about our requirement or goal to make arrangements for five hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and seventy homes? Thought, thought it was inappropriate, but it would have been more better if that would have been silenced and we'd have stayed in tune to the, to the item at hand, which is honoring the deceased veterans of the area. On the twenty-second of December, I spent some good quality time with the former mayor of Walnut Creek, Kevin Wilk. During the period immediately after the event at Nordstrom's in Walnut Creek, I received a number of emails, telephone calls, messages. The bottom line questions were, too, The bottom line questions were two. Is it still safe to go shopping in Walnut Creek? Is it still safe to go have dinner in Walnut Creek? These were not from citizens of Walnut Creek. These were from citizens of Clayton who were concerned about their safety. And I know that a group of mayors had put together a letter to the district attorney. Who seems to be lacking in addressing some of these, although I gather now that they tagged another or fourth person. But the thing that Kevin shared with me was that, because I had called him immediately after the event. And because I said, I have to respond to people here in Clayton. They're concerned about their safety going to Walnut Creek for both shopping and for, for dinner purposes. And he assured me, and that's why I want to relate to the citizens of Clayton. That Walnut Creek took this whole thing extremely seriously. Although eighty people tried to damage Nordstrom and other of the surrounding areas. They have instituted a number of things that Kevin ticked off for me at the, at this event that I met him on the twenty second. One, they beefed up the police patrols over there to make sure that these kinds of things are cut off before they begin. Two, they have barricaded off the Broadway Plaza area to limit the parking of vehicles. Or unauthorized vehicles, if you will, in and about that area. They are really doing some things. They've also took a portion of their funds from the government, the US government. And have put in place the hiring of additional law enforcement personnel to help address that. So I, I guess my bottom line message to the citizens of Clayton is. You can feel comfortable. That Walnut Creek one took this thing very seriously. They're addressing it and that they will make sure to the best of their ability. That something like this doesn't happen again. On the thirty first of January, New Year's Eve, we had an EBRICS meeting. That's a East Bay Regional Communications System Authority, which I am a representative for the Contra Costa County Mayor's Association. What does this have to do with Clayton? It has a lot to do with Clayton because we oversee the communication system. For all first responders, police, fire, ambulance, whatever, over the two counties, Alameda and Contra Costa. This is to assure that there is an effective communication opportunity for our law enforcement, our first responders. To communicate with other people throughout the general region area. So it is very important and we spent a good time addressing that and making sure. That the radio frequencies are available and that we're utilizing the equipment and bringing new equipment in to upgrade that. And of course, we also had to do one of those administrative matters. And that was make sure that we complied with the, whatever the Senate bill, assembly bill is, that we have our meetings via Zoom. Once a, once a month. I've also had meetings with the city manager and again, talking to various constituents, both on the phone. In person. Emails and so forth. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Diaz. Vice Mayor Tillman, you are next.
Great, thank you. I will be brief since I too was on vacation during most of the month. But on the thirteenth of December, we had our last A bar committee meeting for the Mount Diablo Unified School District. And there we discussed our vision statement as well as board policies that we're trying to create. People who have students that attend the district, so if you're a parent, if you're a teacher, if you're a student, you are invited to attend these meetings. And the next meeting is on January tenth, so next Monday from five thirty to six forty five. They're always the second Monday of the month, except for next month, when it'll be Valentine's Day and we're trying to find an alternate date. And, and that affects both of the schools here in Clayton, so Mount Diablo Elementary School as well as Diablo View Middle School. And it's all of the schools that are within the district that are participating. So we have several teachers, principals, et cetera, that are participating in these meetings. And since I'm the liaison, that's why I report out on these in case anyone was curious. On the twelfth of December, I mean, yeah, on the twelfth of December, I had a lovely dinner in Walnut Creek. With Sam Cahill, Kay Gill rather, from Cal Cities. And that was to learn a lot more about the program and what they're, what they're doing on behalf of all of the cities here, since she's our East Bay Division liaison. And so learned about a lot of the programs that are coming down the pike and had another call with her today where I was invited to apply for one of the positions. And so I will keep you posted on whether or not I receive that nomination. And I also had a meeting with our city manager. That's it. Oh, and by the way, I'm going to do a PSA too. I'm happy that Jeff got his booster. Three of us in my family are boosted, but my baby does have COVID. Which we think she got from the, the only time she was unmasked around all of us, which was without us and that was at soccer practice, unfortunately. Last Thursday. So mask up. I'm seeing lots of people who are being exposed to people that are still out and about. And if you're exposed with some, or you live with somebody who's positive, please stay home. Don't go to the grocery store. Don't run an errand. Stay in the house in quarantine. Don't send your kids to school. Don't even try to go get a test. Just sit tight. If you have a home kit, you were able to get one, use it, but please do your part. Keep everybody safe and I'm glad that, I'm sorry you feel bad, Jeff, but I'm glad you got it. That's it. Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate that. I also was boosted last week. It was a twenty-four hour suck. So Jeff, congratulations for being here. That's awesome. I get it where you are. Couple things. I am part of Transpac. I have been for the last year as Vice Mayor. And previously as a planning commissioner. And last, our last meeting, I was placed into the position as Vice Chair of Transpac. For what those of you don't know, Transpac is the central Costa County, central Costa Cap, Costa County's. Liaison for transportation funding for our transportation projects. We have Walnut Creek, Concord, Pleasant Hill, Martinez and Clayton involved in that. And I'm stepped into the vice chair position for that. Like Councilmember Diaz, I attended the Rees Across America event. It was very well done. It was amazing to see our veterans there. It's amazing to honor our fallen warriors who are buried in the cemetery as well. I really appreciated Mark Steinberg's invitation to attend the event and the opportunity to speak. And I took it solemnly and addressed it accordingly. I will say that it's been. A very interesting experience the past few weeks. I get out and talk to Claytonians about the housing element. It is always appropriate when asked to have conversations about the housing element. And to inform people what is going on. And I will not apologize for conversations when somebody asks me and then we, we start brainstorming on what to do and how to do it. We will have more of a conversation tonight about the housing element. It is something that all Claytonians who have any interest to be involved with and be a part of. And I appreciate the opportunity when people ask questions. Good conversation to the city manager and our, our community development director getting prepared, prepared for this meeting and I appreciate it. Now with that, I'll close the city council reports, but I also note that I am a rookie and I made a mistake. And I missed item six A. So Raina, will you please take on the city manager report? I apologize.
No worries. You can do those in either order. I don't mind. I do actually have a couple of items tonight. The first, I want to provide you an update on Clayton Cares. We have received and funded two household applications. And we have received and funded twenty business applications, plus we have another five that are pending and we expect to have those funded mid-month. So we've spent just under a hundred and thirty thousand so far, so we certainly have capacity. Those programs run through. January thirty first for the businesses and February twenty eighth for the households. But those of course can be extended. Those were just our initial set of deadlines and I'm sure we'll be coming back to talk about. In addition to the, the item later on on the agenda this evening, certainly additional item discussion in the future. Regarding the, the ARPA funding and uses for those resources. But I wanted to give you a brief update on that. Second item I wanted to cover, there was a question that was raised about what the heck is this thing I'm hearing about SB thirteen eighty-three? And organics recycling and do I need to do something with my, you know, food waste immediately right this second? And do I need to have worms in my kitchen? Nobody's asked me that, but you know, that is a thing, right? So I just wanted to provide a brief update. More to come on this. Our residential organics program will begin later this year. We are working with Republic. On how that's going to get all rolled out and it does require some, it's changes to our ordinance. It's changes to our franchise agreement. It's changes to containers, et cetera. So it's not a flip the switch and it's, it's super easy. There are a handful of jurisdictions in the Bay Area. Who already had it implemented, so they're ahead of the game. The rest of us are playing a bit of catch up. But we will be getting that implemented this year, so you'll be hearing more about that as we, we get a little farther into twenty twenty-two. So you're not behind yet residential and commercial folks. And, and we will definitely have quite a bit of outreach, as will Republic, once that's kind of directly on tap for folks. So just wanted to provide that. And then the last thing I wanted to cover is not really my favorite topic, but that is COVID. As I indicated to the mayor and council and all our staff. Our city hall is open for appointments for public needing to come in for any reason. But it is not open for drop-in. We encourage people to call and work with us electronically to the extent possible. The number of cases in Contra Costa County is just on a huge, huge upswing. And although it looks like maybe we'll hit the peak in the next week or two and then it'll come down. And, and although it looks like it is perhaps less, creating less severe illness, it is no joke. We're struggling for staffing. I know other cities in the county are struggling for staffing and I couldn't agree more with. The comments that a number of the council members have made, that it's up to all of us to get this thing a bit more under control. So please do your part. We'd rather have people stay safe and have things take a little bit longer than to kind of rush in. So that is how we're handling that for Clayton. Please, if there are public listening to this, definitely call, work with us electric, electronically. And if we do need to meet, we can make that available, but we are trying to limit the amount of. In-person contact for the time being. We do expect additional guidance from the county health officer, probably just prior to Friday, January fourteenth. Which is when the current sort of round of specific masking orders, et cetera, are currently scheduled to expire. So we will continue to meet virtually until we get a clear picture that we're over the hump and into a better place. Because I don't, we, we, it, it wouldn't be smart for us to bring people together in person right now. There's just no reason to, to risk that, given what we're seeing with the way that this particular variant spreads. So no fun. Hope to someday not be talking about COVID all the time. But we are in the midst of trying to manage this current, current surge. So with that, thank you, Mayor and Council. That is it for me on city manager remarks.
Thank you, Raina. And just to tag on to that, as quick as we can and as safely as we can. My goal is to get us back together and looking each other in the eye in direct dialogue and we'll just wait until we're able to do so. Item number six is now closed and we're going to get into item number seven, where we have public comments on non-agenda items. Now I had a comment about this last meeting and I'll state it again. We need to be kinder to each other. It's part of who we are. It's part of our mantra is do the right thing as a city. I am publicly asking you, the public right now, that your public comments should be not addressed to an individual member, but to the council as a whole. I want you to think about your comments. I want you to be respectful. All of us are doing our best and while we may disagree, we all want what's best for Clayton. So please be respectful to your comments to us. And if you disagree with us, state so in a respectful manner and state your position. And with that, we'll open public comment. You get three minutes to speak about a topic that's not currently on the agenda. Janet, do we have any hands?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item. Oh, Juan just went up. Scott, as I promote you to panelists, you'll have three minutes to speak. If you can, please unmute your microphone.
Hey guys, how are y'all doing tonight?
Doing well, Scott.
So as many of you guys know, my wife and I run a fundraiser and clothes drive that to kind of feed and clothe the homeless every year. It's always just been her and I until this year. And I just want to say how grateful we are that so many dozens of people in the community. Have pitched in this year from donating to sorting to distribution. I mean, we had people out there going out to the state park, handing out stuff to the homeless that we had collected. Just so many people from the community have really come together around this and just really appreciate it. I feel when we talk about Clayton cares and Clayton representing, you know, common values and whatnot, that's. It's just something that really gratifies me. Like I said, we had a whole bunch of people helping out and I feel it's. It's just a way that we can really come together and help people in need. So a lot of folks keep asking me the last several days. Are you guys still collecting clothes? Are you still distributing? And the answer is a wholehearted yes, we are. And even though our entire front room is completely full of everything from tents, sleeping bags, coats and everything in between. I can promise you guys that if you can get stuff to us, we'll get it to folks in need. So weather is just so nasty out there. It's changing every day. And got to say, we're, we're just really touched that we've received so many tents, sleeping bags and warm coats in particular. Last few days have been nothing but a non-stop cavalcade of neighbors dropping off everything from small bags of socks to newly purchased sleeping bags. It's, it's been a really beautiful experience. So anyone listening tonight and city leadership and administration in particular. Feel free to rummage through your closets and drop some stuff off if you can. That's all. Thank you, neighbors. Hope you all had a wonderful Christmas and have a terrific twenty twenty-two. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. Are there any other hands raised?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any other hands raised on the side of.
And with that, item seven, public comments on non-agenda items is closed. Move on to item number eight, which is public hearings and we have none. And with that, we'll move into item number nine, action items, in which we have three. And we'll start off with the first one. Which is a determination of item A, the termination of council committee assignments for twenty twenty-two. I know that when I put these assignments together, I tried to keep them very similar to last years. And not make as much upset because it seemed to work last year and I'm open to comments right now.
I just had a clarifying question. When I was comparing last year to this year and it was the. I'm trying to get my papers in order here. That the ad hoc public safety committee dropped off. And it's my understanding that the ad hoc committees sunset at the end of the year. And so I wanted to us to maybe discuss what, to discuss whether or not we wanted to continue that one or not as a council. But I did notice that that one was not on here, obviously because it was only good for the year, I guess. So, sorry, go ahead.
Raina, please, please answer the question, Raina.
I would like to comment on it. Thank you. So typically ad hoc committees are established for a limited purpose, for a limited amount of time. They don't carry over automatically and frankly, if they are of a broad enough topic to kind of last more than a year. They would typically become a standing committee. A standing committee is under slightly different rules. They would typically become a standing committee, a standing committee is under slightly different rules than a, an ad hoc committee. A standing committee is a formal Brown Act body, so it's just got a lot more kind of structure around it. The public safety ad hoc that was established came out of some very specific incidents. And so given that it didn't have, you know, we didn't meet for the last portion of the year. And it isn't, you know, it hasn't been a standing committee. It sunsets essentially at the end of the year because it, it has served its purpose. If there is a need or a desire for a particular public safety or any other relatively, you know, on a narrow topic ad hoc. That can be brought back at any council meeting before the establishment of another, the establishment of an ad hoc. Again, limited purpose, limited duration. And so typically, again, that would expire at the end of this year, absent anything else. If there's a desire to establish a different, an additional standing committee, such as our budget audit committee, that is also possible. It just runs under slightly different roles. And so it, you know, it doesn't have to have a regular meeting schedule set out in advance. But it does, it is subject to additional noticing and other requirements. So with that, that's the rationale for that particular committee sunsetting. And it is ultimately a discussion now or at any time over the course of the next year to consider an additional committee.
Okay. The main reason why I brought it up was I, I seem to recall in the summer of two thousand and twenty. Clearly, there was the issue that we had downtown and I recall that the, the public safety ad hoc committee was formed. Because a lot of residents wanted to have a dialogue with the chief of police. And then the council was determining which council members would sit on that. And then probably, I mean, after that, subsequent to that, then we have the issue up here on Keylock with the hit and run. And that was with a lot of the remaining meetings that occurred centered around that. And so I, I'm totally fine with sunsetting it. I just know that there was a lot of input from residents really wanting to be able to have a dialogue with the chief. Not necessarily around what happened just downtown, but they liked that they were able to have that dialogue in, in some way to be able to bring their concerns to her. And so just a point of consideration for the rest of the council to consider for the rest of the year. Whether or not that's something that we want to allow them to still have access to. So that's why I wanted to bring it up. I'm totally fine leaving it as is and sunsetting it though. If Jim was my counterpart on that, so I'd like to hear his thoughts if he has any.
Jim, do you have any thoughts? Councilor Diaz?
No comment.
As I said, certainly come back at any time, right? So you know, the, the council's not required to make a decision on that tonight. There could be, you know, sort of thought based on your comments, Vice Mayor Tillman, and then further, further conversation at a future meeting as well.
That's good.
So is there a roll call voter list or for approval that's required at this, at this time? Or is there a public comment required at this time? Where, where are we? Bingo.
What comments?
Appreciate it. We will open this up to public comment. There is no further discussion in this city council. I will, before we do that, yes, Vice Mayor Tillman, you do that for me also.
I do. I, I would like to add what a lot of these other committees do. For example, what is the Unsung Heroes Program?
And can I take that, Mayor?
Please do. Thank you.
Unsung Heroes is the adult version of Do the Right Thing.
Okay.
That's pretty much as simple as it is. We're going to expand on that program. I've talked to the mayor about that for two thousand and twenty-two. So we'll look to honor some adults in some fashion during two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, great. And what does a downtown activities committee do?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't have the answer. I know that last, I kept the assignments the same with CW and, and and Jim as the people who were involved with that. There was not a report on that last year, but I think it's.
And we didn't, we didn't meet last year.
Related instance, is it? Anybody else give me some more knowledge or intelligence on that?
I'm just wondering if we should clean this list up if we aren't doing anything with these.
Well, we have, we have the Endeavor Hall Committee as well. We didn't meet there. You know, there are several of those standing committees that have been around a long time. I think that's a, is, and then as needed basis.
Okay.
And as far as the downtown activities and Endeavor Hall, it seemed appropriate for council members Wolf and Diaz. As much as they're involved in the downtown, to be involved in those. That's why I kept it as, as it is.
Oh, I have no issue with, with who's assigned to which. I'm just curious whether you have to list and eliminate some if we literally don't do anything with them. And we haven't for years. It just seems like it's filling white space to me.
Fair statement.
So I'll leave it alone for this year. Let's see if we actually have any traction once we can get out and about and actually do things. And maybe if things remain the same and nothing is done, we eliminate some next year.
Thank you for the suggestion. I appreciate it. Any other comments from the council before we put this out to public comment? And with that, Janet, do we have any hands for public comment?
Mayor Wolf, I do have one hand. Scott, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Don't worry, Peter. She'll get used to saying microphone.
Hey guys, how are you doing again? I'm feeling like a regular. The, I really want to agree with, with Holly there. The, I, I had high hopes for the public safety committee in particular. I'd had several meetings with Chief Warren. We were working out an interview platform for a Zoom call. You know, things got called off, but we had a nice dialogue going and we had members from all sides of the community, so to speak, kind of contributing. And out of that kind of came the public safety committee in a lot of ways. And the, I'm, I'm, I don't want to say disappointed. It's been a tough year. I know we all have a lot going on. I'd like to see more going on with that. And Holly, I appreciate you bringing it up tonight. I think it's an important topic. And Jim, as the other member of the committee, I thought you might have more thoughts on that. As somebody so actively involved, someone who's one of only two members of the committee, as far as I understand, I thought you might have more thoughts. Maybe, maybe in time you can find time to, to work together with Holly and other members of the community and the chief to, to contribute more on that. And appreciate again Holly bringing it up and hopefully it's something we can, you know, revisit going forward when we all have some time. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Scott. Any other hands, Janet?
Yes, I do have one more hand. Terry, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thanks for that, Jen. Just a quick clarification and I apologize, I, I, if, if this is obvious and I don't know. Is there a place on our city website or somewhere that's easily accessible for the public? That describes what the purposes of the different committees and what roles that we play? That might be a good primer to start with, you know, start with whether they are bringing sufficient value. And whether it's something we want to continue to do, just a, a thought, question, suggestion. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Terry. I'm not aware of the narrative behind each of the committees at this point. But that's a good suggestion and we'll look into that. Thank you. Janet, are there any other hands to this item?
Mayor Cloven.
There actually wasn't, there actually wasn't narrative prepared. I had asked for it when I first came on. I'd have to look at my email. But it does exist somewhere.
Excellent. Let's see if we can find that and get that out.
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
With that, we'll close public comment on this item nine A and bring it back to city council. And if there is, is there any other discussion? If not, to entertain a motion to accept the assignment that they've been written.
Motion to approve is written.
Go ahead.
All right. Okay. First by council member Wolf, a second by council member one. Janet, can you call the role, please?
Council member Diaz.
Yes.
Council member one.
Hi.
Council member Wolf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
Hi.
Mayor Cloven.
I as well. With that, action number nine A is closed and we'll go to nine B, which is a discussion of the direction of staff regarding the potential hero pay. Rena, will you be giving the staff report on this?
I will be giving an extremely brief staff report. This item was brought back at the request of a couple of council members at the last meeting we held in December. To bring back a discussion on this topic. The staff report that was provided to you just identifies some characteristics around funding. And the, the universe of employees that we have at the city. And some sort of timing and cost considerations, just for context for the council in the discussion. As well as the update that I provided earlier this evening on the latest in the terms of the Clayton cares. Funding that has gone out and certainly the capacity exists in this first tranche. If, if that is the council's desire. And with that, I turn it to the council for your discussion and direction to staff if desired.
Excellent. Does anybody want to open up with a question or some discussion?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I raised this issue at the last meeting. You know, I think there were several of us that, that also were wanting to discuss it. You know, the genesis of this one was the letter received by the, that we received from the, I don't know the correct acronym, the POA. It's the correct acronym, regarding some of the work that was done and, you know, the request to utilize some of the funds for this purpose. I'm in support, but you know, I'm, I'm surprised at the, the, the take rate on the first tranche that we got so far. It's fairly low and so I guess that gives us both opportunity to do additional things. But, you know, I, I would, I would continue to hold the position that our primary, our primary utilization of the fund should be for those businesses and households within the city that were most impacted. To me, I would, I would put the priority there and I think we've done that in the first tranche. Although to continue to prior, to keep that as a high, as the top priority. You know, I would encourage us to go back to the well and both, you know, solicit more participation. As well as increase the dollar amount so that, you know, we, we, you know, we really strongly communicate to folks that please sign up because we want to give you money is a, is a pretty, is a pretty good pitch. I don't know if you need much more than that. But you know, that, what it does give us is this latitude to, you know, to also recognize the work that our, that our police and our city staff have done over this time, you know, and I would encourage us to, you know, move forward with a similar program. I have no idea about the criteria that we'd want to use or the specifics. But I, I, I am supportive of, of the, of the plan. I, I think we can, with the limited number of folks that we're talking about, I forget what the number was, it was on the staff report, I think it was eighteen-ish. I wasn't quite sure about the cutoff where we put it because it seems like. I don't know. You have to put a cutoff somewhere. So it's somewhat line, line drawing. But you're going to have folks that, you know, are new to the city who are probably not eligible, which is, I guess that's okay. But it's a small population and so I would encourage us to make, to do something meaningful. We don't always have a chance to recognize the hard work that our police specifically and the rest of our city staff do within the city. Because we are severely budget constrained. But this is a one, what do you call it? This is a, a one-time probably source of funds. That, you know, are, that this, that is eligible for this purpose. And I think, you know, we can take advantage of that and both show our appreciation for, you know, the work that these folks have done during the pandemic. So with that, I would encourage us to, to be open to increasing the amount quite significantly. And then having the remainder go to, you know, because if you said, I think Rena, you mentioned earlier, the take rate was like a hundred thirty thousand out of one point five million for the first tranche, that's, you know, less than ten percent. And then less than five percent of the total, I think we have lots of room. So I would, you know, I think we're okay here. So. And what we, what I was afraid of was that we'd have too high a take rate, so.
I would like to jump in and wholeheartedly support this effort. And I appreciate the Police Office Association taking the lead on this. And then when the staff took a look at it and expanded it to other people. We have people that are in front of the public on a regular, daily, hourly basis. And this is our opportunity to recognize and appreciate those, those individuals. And I am surprised as council member one is that there was such a, a low take rate from the businesses. I, every time I see one of the owners, I say, you know, all you got to do is put in the request. And there's a probably a high, you know, high probability that you're going to get, get some money from this, from this project. And they said they would and so I, I, that's all you can do is encourage them. It's, it's a gift and something they can use to sort of at least put a Band-Aid over what happened over the past year or so and on the timeline. As it speaks to the limits on when it began and when it ends, that's a fact of this whole situation that we're in. Don't have a problem with that. It's one of those things that happens. You either are in it or you're, we're not a, a part of the, the process when, when the, when this COVID hit and all the other things that implemented. So I'm in support of it, strong support of it and hope that we consider making this happen sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Council member Wolf, I saw your finger come up.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot. Well, I second all those emotions. I, you know, I, I would, I would challenge us to think that maybe we should consider the, the staff as a whole, the police as a whole. Because while COVID began in two thousand and twenty, it certainly is affecting us still. And, you know, this, this variant is running rampant the way things are. And so our, our heroes are still there. We have to close the city hall because of it. We have, certainly we have two officers who began work after March two thousand and twenty-one, but two thousand and twenty-one was not a pleasant year. So I, you know, I would, I would venture to say that as far as a cutoff is concerned, we have eighteen full-time employees, two part-time employees. And, and I mean, really, when, when do we ever get federal funds to help support our people? And, you know, I would, I would just venture to say I'm certainly in full support of whatever it is that we wind up doing. But I would consider all of the staff and, and all of our police as a whole. So that's my comment.
Rena, can I ask a question? Right now we had eighteen staff, full-time staff and two part-time employees that were eligible based in the March first, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. How many additional staff have been hired since?
So there are one, two, three, four, five. I believe there are five who started after that time. Two in the police department, one in maintenance, two in the all other office staff category.
And going back to police officer Ania's request from the POA, he had mentioned a figure around the two thousand dollar mark. I, I think that was the number I recall. So we're looking at eighteen times two thousand plus another ten thousand. In the forty-six thousand dollar range, which is still pittance of what we've been given. pittance of what we've been given, just just putting into perspective.
Yeah, and I I'm sorry, Mayor, I would venture to say this isn't going to hurt the businesses either, or or the people that have yet to apply. I think we have certainly have a great deal of money in the coffers, and like Jim said, how how can you turn down a gift and yet people are not are not applying? And we rolled this out in a hurry. I mean, this council really got together and and got this stuff done in a hurry, because we heard so much from everybody that they wanted these funds, and and now nobody's taking them. So let's use them where we can, and and maybe we're not getting the word out enough. Maybe people
As an ancillary request related to the low take rate, can you, I was hoping, Rena, maybe you can prepare like a brief blurb about the fact pattern of the take rate so that we could utilize that when we go talk to the businesses and tell them to get their act together and get them to take some free money. Like, we had eligible X, we had a take rate of Y, we had eligible dollars of X, we only had Y take, so there's money available, please, please utilize it, that type of thing. I think that'd be helpful. That's kind of separate from this topic, but asked there. I I I do like the idea of not having a cutoff because of the continuing impact. Because this, I think the funds are designed to mitigate some of the impacts of the pandemic, and those impacts are ongoing. So I would say I'd be supportive of if it's if it's if that is an option available to us. I I'm not clear whether or not we can extend it to people outside of any given cutoff, and I would want to avoid any appearance of self-dealing in that way. But if it is an option available within the the within the to still be compliant with the program, then I think including those without a cutoff or including all staff without a cutoff based on time, I'd be cool with as well.
I thought that it was, go ahead, Rena, you're probably going to answer the question, but I thought that March third was for the program in and of itself, the March twenty twenty one cutoff.
So the 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 way that the March deadline date works in the case of the business is that they have to be in place and a going concern prior to that date. What I'd like to do is double check the specific language in the federal guidance to make sure that I can answer this accurately. My memory for the essential worker pay is that it can be sort of ongoing, if you will, it can be forward-looking or current-looking. And so, you know, I I believe that you could include everyone using the same data as we did for the businesses and that the households just sort of simplified the thinking about kind of where we were headed with that. So, you know, if the direction is to to move forward with such a program and include everyone who can be included under the federal guidelines, then, you know, we can bring back that very specific piece when we bring back an appropriation or an adjustment to the the funding for it. So that's how I would kind of ask that we handle it at this point is I think we can look forward on the employee side. We just need to I just, I want to double check the three hundred pages of federal guidance.
Thank you. I would, I'm going to just jump in here really quick to say I concur with everything that was already mentioned. The only thing that I would lobby for and lie, I don't really like that word lobby, but put input in for is to increase the amount. I know that they provided, the POA provided the data for our neighboring city of Concord, giving all employees two thousand dollars, and then the officers have an additional fourteen hundred to staff. Is that is that what's what recommended for hero pay, or can we come up with any amount that we want to? Because if we can, I think the number should be higher.
It should be better than Concord.
Be careful, Laura's listening.
Bring it on.
Go ahead.
You can absolutely establish whatever level. I think the cap is twenty five thousand. Again, I I want to double check the the regulations just to make sure that that is that I'm not misstating that, but it's quite a bit higher than a thousand fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred or two thousand. So so that's not a concern specifically, and I know other jurisdictions have gotten gone to higher amounts as well. So, you know, I'm I'm certain there's there's a bit of room there. I think, too, I believe Councilmember Juan mentioned in his comments earlier some consideration about, you know, on the businesses and the households that since the take rate has been considerably less than we hoped feared, I'm not sure which of those. It would be that we might look at increasing those dollar amounts for the businesses and the households. And I would say certainly the evidence we've seen on the household side is there, there are some very low-income households who we had the two that applied, and I know that that would be, you know, hugely beneficial to them. And so as we look at what that thought process is about employees, so we set the household amount at fifteen hundred per household. I would particularly, as we look at, you know, if whether it's a two thousand dollar amount or whatever it might be above that for for employees that we relatively quickly consider whether particularly on the household side that we, whether we want to increase that amount, which would take a future action. But just as we're looking at kind of cares, not cares, sorry. Flashback. Yes, American Rescue Plan funding. So that's, that's what I would say. But yes, you can absolutely go above the any of the dollar amounts that have been mentioned.
The way that I would, oh, sorry. Yeah, the way that I would, like, the way that I think about it is it would be helpful for us as a group, I think, to have a targeted proportion of our available funds into the various groups. We did not do that immediately because we are our our primary purpose was expedience. But now, given we have a little bit more information, I would say, you know, we set a target for like the hero pay, we set a target for household pay, we set a target for businesses. And by doing that, you know, we're, I think we'll be better able to tailor that program. The hero pay, I believe, I'm just going to go out on a limb and say we'll get a higher take rate. Like a hundred percent, maybe. And so, given that, it's really easy to target. So like, you know, I'm I'm doing some some rough quick and dirty math here, and I did not accommodate for the the haircut for the consultants. But, you know, if we target something like take available funds after the haircut and say like ten percent is towards our, towards our here, I I don't like saying hero pay because I feel like that's very, sounds very awkward, but
Essential worker.
Towards our essential workers. You know, ten percent, you know, if we take, if we're talking like, what was it, like two point nine million? And I think it was like a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand consulting fees, give or take, something like that, right? So two, seven. Right? And then so you get ten percent of that. That's two hundred seventy thousand divided by how many total people FTEs we get, twenty four? Ish? Twenty six, sorry. I'm too many twenties. Then you get a better number. And 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 that that, I don't know what that, it doesn't have to be that precise. But having a target, to me, provides those provides that guidance, and it makes it more mathematical, which I like as well. So that if you have a ninety percent pot left, after pretend for a moment that we all agree ten percent is the right number, gives you ninety percent left, you say like some, you divide it by the households and the businesses, you can go, you know, sixty, thirty, or whatever number we happen to agree on. And then that gives, I think that allows us to tailor the programs a lot more a lot easier. So that that'd be how I'd approach it, and I would put that out there for consideration.
The the one thing I would add as well to consider, we did do some of that, or you did some of that in your initial crafting of the program. It was about three quarters, one quarter business to household. It was fifty percent because we only have fifty percent of the money. It was all of that. So, you know, this would be a kind of a refinement or a next step on that same process, adding in this category for essential worker pay. The the one other thing that I would ask is that we identify a category that looks at the city has had some costs and continues to have some costs associated with COVID response, particularly related to, you know, city hall and you know, extraordinary equipment costs, if we need to rent another vehicle, which it looks likely might in order to keep our crew safe on the maintenance side. So you know, there there is this other category that I I would want to give a a place to live, some funding. And so, you know, if there's a you know, depending on how the council wants to move forward, I would just add that.
That makes sense to me. Yeah, that sounds, that sounds very reasonable to me as well.
Are there any other categories that we need to consider as well? I I don't have the diagram that we had from that that meeting in front of me right now, but I thought there were other areas that we can also consider that some some in public comment had mentioned they were concerned about as well, but I can't remember what it was off the top of my head.
The one major area that's not included is infrastructure. There are some infrastructure components, but Maul is probably telling, going to tell us, we need to be talking about hero pay.
Right, we need to be talking about the essential worker premium pay. And so if we want to have the broader discussion, and we seem to keep diverge diverging to the broader discussion, if we want to have that broader discussion in order to kind of close the loop on the premium pay discussion, we should probably bring that back as a broader agenda item.
Right, let's bring it back to the hero pay itself. Jeff, if I heard you correctly, you said ten percent of our two point seven million dollar net, which is about two hundred seventy K, at twenty six employees, that's approximately ten K per employee. If if my math is working properly.
That's a nice round number, yeah.
Are we basically saying that if we reserve ten percent towards our essential workers that we distributed accordingly? Based based on that number, that ten percent number? And what is was the direction we're giving and to when that happens?
Well, I think we first need to establish if if we're supportive of the ten percent number.
When I asked the initial question about whether or not it had, there was a limit, the number I had in my head was already ten thousand. I think it's kind of customary for some cities to do about twenty five hundred. But as we said, we don't need to follow other cities. So that your your math falls right in line with what I was thinking, so I like it. And it works for me.
Good. That's that's all right with me, too.
Jim, what do you?
I don't see there, Jim.
I'm fine with it. Thank you.
So if we want to designate that. Yeah, so if we want to designate like that proportion, and then we have to work out the fine details, which I'm sure Rena and team could do regarding the availability, because it's not going to, we can make it a nice round number if we want, because that's nice, too. So and then we could Maul is going to look at me weird, we can bring back the other topic.
Bring back the other topic. That's completely appropriate. I just don't want us to keep discussing the other topic.
I would say direction sounds like a an amount of ten thousand per employee based on this conceptual thing that we'll come back to to further refine, but it fits, generally speaking. I I would like that we would have direction based on, you know, current employees versus those before or after a particular date. Not that I'm against this one person. We did have an officer start like December sixth, so just FYI, that just.
I I think that you were going to look at the
I'm going to look at the regulations.
And I would say if the rules allow for it because of the ongoing impacts of the pandemic and the the intent of the funds are supposed to mitigate those impacts, then I would, I would be supportive to the extent that the rules allow.
I concur.
And would we extend that to any new employees that come on board after the date that these are dispersed? Because this might actually be the hiring boom we were looking for. Maybe now we get the, maybe come on board.
You got a signing bonus.
I think you you essentially do have to establish some kind of cutoff, right? If you're going to do the math, right? So from at the time where you implement the program, I would say is probably the cutoff.
I agree with that. I agree with that, too. And we always have the we can amend things down the road if we absolutely need to. It depends on what's going to happen, and who knows? But yeah, this is well, it's well thought out, I think.
They got to get it from their city. If they come here, they got to get it from their city. And if it's conquered, then it's going, no, never mind.
And maybe it'll make more than just Channel Five now.
Okay, so I think technically we need to come back and bring an appropriation request to you because the council has to take a formal action to appropriate the funds, and that was not on the agenda as a specific appropriation. So Maul is nodding, yes, Rena, you got that right. So we will we can bring that back relatively quickly. It will just be a resolution at that point on consent that says you're going to appropriate the money to implement council direction to do X, Y, Z, et cetera. So.
Excellent. There's, nobody should get excited in the city yet till we flush this all out.
Right. I mean, it's, it is, you know, there there are some specifics that we need to, you know, put the fine touches.
Just know that we're supportive.
Absolutely.
So do you have the directions that you need now, Rena, to move forward?
I do, thank you.
Do we have to?
Did we take public comment? That was my concern.
We did not.
Ah, okay, then let's open this up for public comment before we bring it back. Is, are there any? Anybody out there like to raise their hand? I go ahead, Janet, please call them.
Mayor Cloven, I have a couple hands that I raised. Deborah, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Deborah.
Okay, sorry, my 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 phone, I've never done this before, and it did a whole blank out thing. So I just double checking. So I know you didn't want to discuss all of the other stuff with the ARPA money and everything, that you really only wanted to talk about this quote, hero's pay. But I do want to say that to the point of one of the council members, which was this meeting was the very first time I had even heard about the Clayton cares program. And then I, while you guys were speaking, I went ahead and looked at it. And I'm I'm looking at, you know, as for like a household, you know, that the the income limits for the number of, the number of heads and everything. You know, I'm in need of assistance, but I don't qualify, I'm above this. And then I'm looking at the posted salaries and the most recent salary records that I found very quickly for Clayton was for two thousand nine nineteen. So now, you know, you guys are talking about, oh, well, nobody's applying for this, so we can increase the amount for the hero's pay and all this stuff. And you know, and I'm looking at, you know, so many of these people, you know, a police officer here has a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars in you know, total pay in two thousand nineteen. I mean, like, and then here I am, I'm I'm just above, you know, for a two-person household, I'm just above that income limit on the cares. I'm not going to be able to apply for that fifteen hundred, but that officer who makes a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars is going to get ten thousand dollars? How do you address that to, you know, people who, you know, and judging from the traffic that I am exposed to as I leave for work every day, quite a lot of us are out there. We have been since the first two weeks of the pandemic after that initial lockdown happened, and we're public facing and all of this stuff, and it feels a little bit you know, insulting. We're excluded from this one tranche with, you know, we have to watch these other people who make a tremendous amount of money, get ten thousand dollar bonus. you know, insulting. We're excluded from this one tranche with, you know, we have to watch these other people who make a tremendous amount of money, get $10,000 bonus. When I'm, when my question would be more like, you know, can you expand the income limit? Could you, you know, spend some of the money on the schools in the, in the nearby neighborhoods? Can we get testing kits for the community? You know, I heard in a previous item, they're talking about the waste recycling, the, the food waste recycling program that's going to come up. My understanding is this, the money can be spent on infrastructure. So wouldn't that qualify? Should we be, be making sure we can, you know, take care of that program as it comes to the deadline of needing to be implemented? And the other thing that I saw is that this money, this ARPA money could be spent on reducing taxes in the city. So, you know, should we maybe talk about reducing the taxes on the residents of Clayton? And before we increase the amount of bonus.
Really appreciate your words, Deborah. Thank you for bringing that to attention. We'll continue to have a discussion on that. There are some very clear guidelines in ARPA on how the funds can be spent, and I appreciate your input on that. Thank you.
I, I do have one more thing about.
Unfortunately, you have three minutes to talk and public comment, and there is a timer which you may not have been able to see on your phone. So apologize, Deborah, for cutting you off early. But I do appreciate your comments. Janet, do we have any other hands up?
We do. Our next speaker is Amy. Amy, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amy Heinschike, and I have been a resident of Clayton since 2012. I reside in the Regency Meadows neighborhood. And I'm a new planning commissioner. Thank you all for your leadership in this space. I, I just really want to say that I have enjoyed hearing the discussion, which is so different than some others that I've been privy to recently in my professional life, which is being an honorable employer, a generous employer, and taking into account the, the deep experiences of our essential workers as they've come to work every day, unflinchingly being able to provide services to our community. I really appreciate the leadership of Councilmember one and everybody else who brought the hero prey, a hero pay to the fore and even spoke about increasing it above and beyond what the essential workers had asked for. Obviously, our police officers and everyone else who comes to work every day for us in Clayton deserve this hero pay. And I just really deeply appreciate the conversation. And thank you so much for honoring the workers as they deserve to be honored and leading from the front and just, just being a great employer. So thank you for representing us in Clayton who believe that same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Janet, do we have any more hands?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you, Janet. Appreciate it. Let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the city council. You have direction we had talked about previously. Do we need to make it any more formal than we've given you at this point? All right. And with that, I believe item, second item on our, our agenda is closed. We move to the third item. Hang on, we'll give it over there for me. Item 9B, hero pay is closed. And we move on to item 9C, which is a progress report of the sixth cycle, the housing element update and a discussion of direct to staff on the draft housing element goals. And with that, we will turn the city report over to our community development director, Ms. Ayers.
Thank you, Mayor Cloven and members of the council. You all know who I am. My name is Dana Ayers. I'm your community development director. I believe I'm also joined by Laura Stetson, who is with the firm of MIG. I think Rena is quickly looking for her in the queue of attendees.
Give me a moment. We're having some technical difficulties, but I'll get that worked out.
Okay. Okay. Well, she is around and is here representing the firm of MIG and will be on deck in case there are any questions come up that she can give some insight on. What we'd like to do this evening is just to give the council a brief update on progress, things that we've done with respect to the housing element in the last few months. And also to get some input from council members and members of the public about the goals, the, what we the sort of guiding principles for the housing element. This is being done following on some feedback that we got from the planning commission and city council at the September meeting that we first had with this group. And so with that, I'll dive into the presentation of where we are and where we think we're headed over the next few weeks. So. Okay. Are folks able to see the presentation? Thumbs up? Okay, thank you. So again, this is a progress report on the sixth cycle housing element update and discussion on the draft housing element goals. The objectives for tonight, as I've mentioned before, we'd like to, staff would like to update you on recent and upcoming efforts on the sixth cycle housing element update. We'd also like to get feedback and comment from members of the public as well as members of the city council on the draft housing element goals and to get some preliminary feedback on those goals before we move back to the planning commission and actually do the hard work of finalizing those, getting the policies and, and implementing programs together. So first I'd like to start with just a review of the legislative context for the housing element. The city council has gotten this before in September when we had your joint workshop with the planning commission. I won't go into as deep of a dive as MIG did in the presentation that they made, but I do want to give a reminder and a refresher brief, hopefully, of the the, the statute behind why we're doing this. As city council knows, every jurisdiction in California is required by law to have a general plan, and that general plan is the vision for that community's future for a period of time of several years to several decades, depending on the horizon. The housing element is one of eight mandatory elements in the general plan. The others have to deal with land use, circulation, noise, safety, open space, conservation, environmental justice. The housing element of a general plan in every jurisdiction must consist of an identification, and, and here I am going to read, analysis of existing and projected housing needs and a statement of goals, policies, quantified objectives, financial resources, and schedule programs for the preservation, improvement, and development of housing. The housing element shall identify adequate sites for housing, including rental housing, factory-built housing, mobile homes, and immersancy shelters, and shall make adequate provision for the existing and projected needs of all economic segments of the community. And this is text taken directly from state statute regarding housing elements and what has to be within a housing element. I'm digging a little bit deeper into the more specifics of what needs to be in a housing element. The components of a housing element need to include an assessment of existing and projected needs for housing households of all income levels. This includes an inventory of resources and regulatory, regulatory and financial constraints to meeting those needs. So the housing element needs to look at what does your population look like? What does your housing stock look like? Do you have units that are affordable currently, but that are at risk of being converted to market rate? And the assessment needs to include all of that information, characterizing the demographics as well as the physical characteristics of the community. And, and wrap those up into the, the, you know, the package of housing. The housing element also needs to include a statement of community goals, quantified objectives, and policies relatives to maintenance, relative to maintenance, preservation, improvement, and development of housing. And the housing element needs to include a program of actions that the jurisdiction commits to implementing during the eight-year housing cycle to achieve the goals and policies of the housing element. And these can range from rezoning of properties, identification and removal of constraints, offering of incentives. But they need to be programs that the jurisdiction commits to implementing to accommodate housing in their jurisdiction. The housing element must also commit to affirmatively furthering bare housing by identifying and correcting disparities in access to housing for all purpose, regardless of any state protect, or legally protected status or other limiting factor for an individual. So where are we? Where have we been in the last few months? The effort was kicked off with the housing consultant back in May, when the council authorized the contract with MIG to do the heavy lifting on preparing the housing element update. Since then, MIG has had introductory interviews and meetings with stakeholders, members of the city council and planning commission, one-on-one discussions to get some early feedback and to introduce the housing element. We also did work to review housing element annual progress reports, which the council reviews on an annual basis each spring to look at where progress has been made on the currently adopted housing element and general plan policies. And that document, as I mentioned, goes to the city council every spring and is due to the state as well by April 1st of each year. So part of our effort was to go back and review those reports that have been previously approved by the council and submitted to the state. We've also had a kickoff study session, which the commission and council, obviously you were aware of, it was a joint meeting between both bodies on September 28th. That was also an opportunity to introduce the housing element to the public and the background behind the housing element and what we were trying to achieve, what we had, what we have to achieve frankly with housing element. We also on October 20th had a virtual community workshop with residents and interested parties. And I have to say that was kind of fun. I don't know if it's okay to say that in the presentation, but it, as you can see here, it was very interactive. The video is online on the housing element website, but I just took a couple of screenshots here of part of what was done. And one of the activities that we invited the community to do, or the attendants to do, was to describe, you know, give us adjectives that describe Clayton. And so develop this word map, which you see on the, on the screen here. A second part of the process and that workshop was to have this, I guess you can kind of call it a sticky board. And I, I think that's, there's, I don't know what the term is for it. Laura can just jump in and tell me that I'm wrong, but it's each one of these squares on the screen or rectangles on the screen held a comment that was received from the public. And so again, it was almost like post-it notes on a whiteboard. So it was very interactive in real time as we were receiving comments from people. We were able to put those comments into each little square. And again, that video is on the housing element website. So you can see what went into each of those squares. So that was another opportunity for the community to get involved and for us to hear what folks had to say. We've also gone through a process of identifying currently vacant and underutilized sites as potential housing opportunity sites. And I'll get to that in the next slide as well. We we also conducted or facilitated an online survey for residents and interested parties to share their housing preferences, priorities, and opinions about the housing element, but also about the downtown site, which is owned by the city. The survey was available for a little over a month, about five weeks. Couple of slides here are taken from the presentation that's in, or the, the slide deck that's attached to your staff report that has a very macro level view of the results that came back from that survey. And the consultant is still working to digest that information down into a more refined level. And we'll be, we will be sharing that with council members and probably putting that on the housing element website as well. That'll be in the next week or so. We had a little under 500 folks click on the survey or 500 clicks on the survey. There may have been some duplicates in there. We're not sure. One of the questions that was answered the most, because not everybody answered every question, but the question that had the most answers to it was a question regarding your opinions about the potential growth increase of housing in Clayton. And that's the first question slide that you see in your slide deck attached to your staff report. Folks also identified, asked to identify where could some potential housing sites be? And that's this heat map you see here. Where you see the red, that's where a lot of people are identifying potential housing opportunities. So upcoming efforts over the next few weeks into next month, we intend to have a second online opportunity for community members and interested parties to give feedback on the potential housing inventory sites. This is an agenda report attachment three. What the figure is, is an overview of the city with identification of a few different, or not few, just a couple dozen different sites where housing could occur and what the potential development of those properties might be. Now, this is a very, very preliminary map, right? We've, this is just the first pass at what we have what, what staff has identified, staff and the consultant has, have identified as potential housing opportunity areas. This map will be refined and part of this, this online effort that we intend to kick off next month will give the public an opportunity to play with this map in again, in a very interactive exercise where people can move density from here to here and here to here and try to on their own balance housing opportunity sites to achieve the 570 units that this city needs to show we have the ability and the density to accommodate. So we'll take the information from that as well as future public meetings that we will have on the housing element and the housing inventory. And we'll, we'll bundle that up into something that we'll eventually bring back to the city council for formal adoption after it's gone through its public process. We will also be preparing to release a notice of preparation of an environmental impact report prepared pursuant to CEQA. This is the, starts the process by giving the public an opportunity to give us feedback on the scope of the analysis that should be included in the EIR. And then the planning commission, we will be heavily engaging the planning commission at its meetings to discuss the draft policies and programs that will implement the housing element goals. So your planning commission is your land use authority. They are your advisory body with respect to land use decisions, programs, and actions. We would tend to rely on them quite heavily, both to give us the opportunity for the public to weigh in through their meetings, but to also give us their knowledge in terms of what should the programs look like that will implement the goals of the housing element? What, what, what should the housing inventory look like? And all of that will be bundled up into a recommendation that will come back to the city council for final adoption as a general plan amendment. So this is what's coming in the next month or so, month or two. And then of course, we'll have public hearings later in the year. I, I won't try to schedule those with dates for now, but we will, as I said, have public hearings ongoing with the planning commission to develop recommendations. Okay, now that's sort of the overview of where we are and where we're heading short term. What we were really hoping to get tonight was to start to the discussion of the housing element goals. And, and the goals are the aspirations, the highest level of aspiration of what the city would like to accomplish with respect to housing. What will come out of these goals are more specific policies. And then what will come out of those are more specific implementation programs where we refine these down into actions that will accomplish these, these high-level aspirations. We're not necessarily looking to finalize the phrasing of these goals tonight. As I said, the housing element is going to go through a lengthy public process and both with community meetings, community workshops, and public hearings with the planning commission to develop a recommendation before it comes back to this body. But what we are looking for this evening is some early feedback on these goals to confirm that we're heading in the right direction as far as the aspirations that we will then try to develop the roadmap to achieve. So with that, I'm going to stop. I'm going to stop sharing and if there are any questions, I'll take an opportunity to answer those now. And Laura Stetson from M I G is also available to answer questions from council members and we are looking forward to hearing your feedback as well as feedback from the public who's here tonight.
So just to confirm what we're doing tonight, it's just looking at the general goals. We're not approving goals tonight. We're just looking at the phraseology to some extent, but we're not wordsmithing them. We're just looking at them and essentially they're going to be passed on to the planning commission for final phraseology and wordsmithing, because the planning commission will be eventually making the policies from those goals, correct?
Correct. The planning commission will develop a recommendation which includes the final phrasing of the goals as well as policies and measures, implementing measures. And they will, as a general plan amendment, they are your advisory body.
And just looking at the goals as they're written, it sounds like they're pretty much extracted from the government code section sixty-five, five eighty-three, which is referenced in the the document which you, that you prepared, the report you repaired for the most part.
Yes, there's definitely text that's drawn from that and, and principles that are drawn from state statute. Things, things are mandatory that need to be included in the housing element.
So the conversation tonight is about the goals and direction relative to the goals, so that they can be provided to the, the planning commission for future review and policy creation.
Yes, discussion from council as well as I, I, I can't see if there are any public in the room that are interested, but discussion, this is, this is one of our workshops.
Awesome. I will just make a quick side note personally, that in my conversations with multiple Claytonians in the past few weeks. A lot of citizens missed the opportunity to respond to the first survey. I really appreciate the effort staff put out in the pioneer, next door, Facebook and a bunch of other avenues, but I believe we're still missing the input, which I personally desire from our citizens who are interested in this topic. And I'm really hoping that as a council, that we come up with some creative solutions to help our staff. Get the word out better for the next portion, which is the balancing act portion of this. Whether it be literally knocking in door to door, if that's necessary or something else, we need to get more people involved so they are aware of what's going on because they don't know. I just want to throw that out there and that's my personal desire is to give the people who desire to know a chance to weigh in on this. But that'll open up discussions to the city council. Yes. C W.
Okay, so I agree with that. I, I, I think that the misinterpretation may be that that there's an expectation of timing, that this is going to go on a long time. We're going to have a chance to weigh in on it many, many times. I think the urgency that we need to put out there to the public has, has to be put out there, that they need to get involved right from the start. As far as the goals are concerned, I mean, they're, they're standard issue written. I don't know how we could soften, why we would want to soften language. I don't know what we would add to those goals. So for me, the goals are just fine. I just have one, one quick, quick question, might be out of order here, but you can tell me. Why are we identifying six hundred and eighty-five possibly units instead of five hundred and seventy? Aren't we signaling to the state that we, if this is an easier process than it could be for us?
Can you answer that please?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Keep in mind that the, the attachment to this staff report is, this just, it's a first pass, right? This is just staff identifying vacant sites or underutilized sites, identifying potential density, opportunities for density. And, and this is what the math comes out to. We're not presenting this to you as this is the map. This is what we are sharing.
I know it's, I know it's preliminary. It's just kind of a, it's kind of a signaling effort to me. But, but anyway, that's, that's neither here nor there. Thanks for answering my question. So it, it getting back to the major topic, though, as far as goals are concerned, I'm, I'm fine with them the way they are. I don't, I don't know what we would need to change there. And to Peter's point and to Mara's point, we need to get the word out better, that people need to be involved in these, in these workshops ASAP.
And if you don't mind, if I dovetail on that, Councilmember Wolf. We have six hundred and eighty-five sites identified. If you were to play a SimCity type game, which is what this balancing act next portion is, and you were to take five hundred and seventy game pieces and start playing it on this board and figuring out where you want to put it. If you were somebody who was adamant that we will not change downtown at all. There are eighty houses or eighty units that are currently identified in downtown. So immediately that takes your, your, your eighty out of this. So we're down to six hundred and five. And you have five hundred and seventy game pieces to play to, to, to accommodate that density. So it, it's going to be valuable to have additional spaces instead of the exact number. Otherwise, you're just putting wherever they are. So it's, it's, it's a tool to help us figure out what to do. And that's my interpretation.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Oh, sorry. C W, do you have another?
Well, I'm, I'm, I don't know.
The only thing I'm going to add to Dana's request or to, to help with her request was this side-by-side attachment was very helpful to see what the fifth cycle had versus what these new goals are and kind of how they aligned. And there was one in particular that I liked, just lost it.
Is this in the presentation or in the agenda packet?
It was in the agenda packet.
Okay.
Attachment one. Looks like this.
Got to get there. All right. Yeah.
Uh, let me see which one it was. The, the language, my whole point is the language looks very similar to how it was. It looks like you've added the seventh one is the, the now the first goal for this cycle. Which reads maintain and enhance a long established housing in neighborhoods in Clayton while accommodating moderate growth. But there was one in particular. I marked it when I saw it while we were talking, but I kept flipping through the pages. It's now currently six. Encourage and improve energy efficiency, whereas before we had maintain. And so I like the fact that we were adding in the green technology and making sure that we're doing that. And there was one more. I'm not going to waste our time looking for it. These look great. Thank you. And I hope that the planning commission helps wordsmith those a little bit more. And I appreciate you having the side-by-sides. I can see what we did last night.
Yes.
So can I ask a clarifying question? In the agenda, we talk about, sorry, different here. It talks about receive the rapport, accept public comment, provide direction regarding the goals, but I, just to clarify that anything in the report is fair game at this point, right? I mean, it's not off topic, but accurate.
Yes, I mean, I mean, at this point, we're asking, you're asking questions. So yes, if there's information in the report that's unclear, that I can clarify, then yes.
Okay, cool. So I, I'll, I'll talk to the goals first, because I think that's what you were really looking for at this point. I'll be the detractor here and say, I'm not really the greatest fan of them. I think of the seven, most of them are, are fine and like no problem. I would say for the first and second goal. I'm, I'm unclear as to why we would add the first here. It doesn't, if, I'm not clear if it's a requirement, but if it is a requirement, then the requirement, I'm not, I'd like to look at where that requirement lands because the language here in the goal, and I know we're not wordsmithing, but I guess if we're going back to the planning commission, I would, you know, I would suggest that the language needs to be a lot less squishy. The way that this is written is such that anything would fit in the goal and you could always say that you've, you've satisfied it without any defined parameters. I'm not sure why we would say accommodate moderate growth. I would say our goal should rather, rather than accommodate moderate growth should be to comply with the law and the growth that's required by law. That seems a lot more tangible to me. Goal number two, you know, I think this does lift. By all means.
No, I, I, I apologize for interrupting. I just, I, I I just want to clarify if there are any questions at this point. Because I think what we'd like to do is get the clarifying questions answered. And then if there are any comments from the public, we can hear those and then we can get to the discussion. I mean, it's not a true public.
Yeah, that's fine.
You want to
Sure, I'll stick to the question.
Follow that pattern of.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll stick to questions. So is that, is that language required is my question? And if it is, if it is not, well, you could tell me the answer. And then for goal number two, I know that the requirement does talk about this mix. And so it's saying, it seems like this is lifted largely from the, I'm looking over here because I have a separate screen. So that's why I'm looking over. It seems like that's a requirement to some extent, but we do, we have changed it. So I'm wondering, is the change a requirement? Or what was the, the genesis for making that change in goal number two? Goal number three, again, that one seems like a straight across compare, you know, kind of a straight across and then nothing, nothing doing there. That seems fine. And then the rest, I thought, I'm trying to remember because I, I read this a few days ago. Well, I guess it was a few weeks ago when it came out. Yeah, that was it for me for the, on the goal section. And then so, so that was, that was my questions on the goals. On attachment three, I, I kind of I will echo House Member Wolf's question about why we're presenting it this way and with this number. I think, you know, I had a conversation with Raina about it and I think what, what would be helpful for me here, if, if it's possible. One of the items that came out was that there are certain, there are certain identified sites where a zoning is actually required to be changed this cycle because of some past action in previous cycles. So if there is an actual requirement, it'd be, it'd be helpful to have those clarified because, you know, if we're constrained in some way. Is there a way that we can put the actual constraints that we're operating under, like where we have choice and where we don't? That, that would be helpful. So I don't know if that's possible to add here in a coherent way. And then we did get a comment letter regarding A B thirteen ninety-seven and its requirements. So I was hoping that I would, I would request that you could speak to that and the accuracy of some of the comments, because I, I, I read, I read A B thirteen ninety-seven and I may have had a different interpretation. So I was hoping I would ask that you clarify. It's not really a question, but more of a request. And then can there be, I guess the other question is, you know, we, it seems like we've utilized twenty units per acre as the maximum density, because I think that relates to the size of the city and then that triggered, that's, you know, pulled from statutory and all that. But I guess my question then is, are we allowed to have greater density than twenty units per acre? Is that available to us? And if it is, does that have other potential downstream impacts that may be unintended consequences of that? Like, and for example, if there's some requirement that says X property that meets certain criteria needs to be at whatever your maximum density is. And then if you increase your maximum density in one parcel in a different place, does it then trigger that in others? So I, I'm not quite sure if that, if that's a worthwhile avenue to pursue, but I guess the question is, is mostly can we increase it and does it have those type of impacts? And then the other question was, you know, on, again, referring to attachment three, which is for those at home, it's page one four two of one hundred and seventy-two of the document. It looks like several are at twenty units per acre, kind of all over the place. But then there's several that are also less than twenty units per acre. So I was hoping that you could speak to that as to why we did that. And whether or not that was a, if there's a choice or if that's a requirement. I think that's my questions right now.
Great questions, Jeff. And actually, one of the concerns that I have is the twenty units per acre that we do have. As we've learned from our last experience with the Olivia, the developer who decides to use a bonus density housing can bump that thirty-five or fifty percent based on there. So even these numbers that we have are squishy. You could, relative to what a developer could do from a density standpoint in the future. And that's something we just need to be cognizant of as we go through this process. We've learned from the last cycle. That even though it's twenty units per acre, doesn't mean that it can't get bumped to twenty-seven or thirty, based on whatever the developer does. And whatever he's able to use from a state mandate.
Yeah, we should, we should definitely know that. I mean, definitely bonus law has been around since the seventies, I think. So that, that's been a longstanding rule. I, I forgot. I had one other question. Can you also speak to the, I don't know how to phrase this in the right way. The potential impact that ADUs would have within these numbers and how they're forecasted? I, I think that would be helpful as well. Like, I, I, last time we had talked, we had questions about what the rules were on the mathematical formula. And I think that you were going to take that back and, and find out, there are some jurisdictions that, you know, in, in different areas of the state that had released guidance. And so I don't know if that has filtered its way up it by, you know, in our area, but to the extent that there is information about those, how the math works on ADUs, that could also, that would also be informative here. So again, that's a request, not a question.
And, and I concur, Jeff. That was something that I had hoped was going to factor heavily into some of our belief as far as numbers. And it's not in this particular document as I see it. But again, I, I understand that this is the first tranche of this is kind of what we're working with now. And it's going to be refined significantly in the next few months. And it's just like, this is kind of where we're at. And I appreciate the staff bringing that. Dana, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, would you like? I'm sorry, regarding the ADUs.
Yes.
So, and I'll, if I start to again, kind of head off track, I'll ask Laura to jump in because she's had some experience communicating with H C P with regard to ADUs for, with other jurisdictions. But what I understand is that short version is it's not going to make a huge dent, I, I would say. You're going to, we would need to show a, a pattern of a high number of construction of ADUs in order to justify ADUs per constituting a large percentage of the RENA allocation that the city has. When we look historically, the last few years, there were no ADUs until about two thousand sixteen or seventeen, and then starting in about eighteen, nineteen, we started getting about three to four a year. So that's a good number. But I think it's going to be challenging for the city to make an argument that you know, that Clayton is going to build twenty ADUs a year for the next eight years, and that's a hundred and sixty of our five hundred and seventy units.
The, how, what's the look back period? Because you know, if you have a, if you have a narrow with, narrow enough look back period, you know, we can get one out of six build units will have an A D U. I mean, if we're just looking at the six that we just, the seven that we just authorized. So like, you know, and then if you go back just slightly behind that, you know, I, I think it's item J here and I forgot the name. Is it Diablo Meadows? You know, they have ADUs within their build too. So, you know, those are the last two developments that were approved. And, you know, if you look at those percentages, they're huge.
If you look at it as a percentage of those developments, it's a lot. But if you look at Diablo Meadows, which has three, as you said, Oak Creek Canyon has one.
One, yeah.
So now you're talking about four.
Yeah, but as a percentage, it's like. Yeah, but as a percentage, it's like. Over fifteen percent.
Of those developments.
The yeah, of the population. So I guess I that's why I want to know. I'm interested in what the rules are. Does the rules allow you to look at? A percentage? Does it allow you to look? Is it just gross units? That that's important, right? Because that makes a difference. So.
I'm sorry, Mayor Mayor Cloven, can I? I I keep jumping in and forgetting to ask if I have the floor to answer. I'm sorry.
Go ahead and answer that, Dana, please.
Okay, thank you. Um. It's per year. I don't think HCD is going to. They're going to look at our annual progress reports from the last few years and see that you have issued building permits for. For accessory dwelling units per year. The four that have been approved as part of Diablo Meadows and Oak Creek Canyon is consistent with that pattern. And I think we could argue that. But to. Make the argument, to make the argument that the percentage of ADUs attached to that new construction. Is representative of the percentage of the entire city of built units whose homeowners. Now want to build ADUs. I I think that's a that's a difficult extrapolation to make. And I think it's going to be challenging to make that argument to HCD. Another big difference between those is you're talking about new builds versus existing builds. Right? And ADUs are a great way to build your. Your property value to offset your mortgage. They still cost a lot of money, though. I mean, you're talking about six figure. Projects. And um, not every homeowner in Clayton is going to have that.
No, of course, no, that's that's a that's a stretch. But I guess I would say like a lot of the sites that we've identified here. You know, on attachment three, do contemplate new builds. And so when we're talking about. Whether or not these new builds will have ADUs, like, what is it reasonable to like, is it reasonable to? Project some percentage of these new builds to contain it. And I I I know that may be a novel argument. Um, to make. Um, and you know, you can bolster the argument with the requirement within the code, within the thing that says, if you do this, then you must do this. And then, you know, I think that helps you out possibly. But, you know, I would say that for the new builds, you know, we have a history, albeit short. And on a go forward basis, where we're talking about all of these, uh, what do you call it? Opportunity sites? Is that what we're calling it? Uh, all of these opportunity sites. Well, not all, but a lot of them are new builds. And so, you know, to say that they would. Meet a similar pattern, I do not think is outside the realm of reason, but. But that's that's where, you know, the rules come into play and and the the question regarding what the rules actually are.
I guess I have another question, Mayor, if you don't mind. How does SB nine then play into all of this? Where there's nothing about it. I mean. You know, I we're talking about existing neighborhoods where people are dividing their property. And how does that? How does that play into the numbers here?
It doesn't. Short answer.
And that's because because it's not a new builder. It's not their ADUs involved or.
Uh, Mayor Cloven, may I answer?
Please do. I appreciate it, Dana.
Sure. So yes, SB nine is intended by the state. I mean, the state really probably should give credit. For what could happen under SB nine. I think the challenge with SB nine at this point is that it's untested. At least with the ADUs, we can demonstrate a pattern of. Look, we've had three people in twenty eighteen that built ADUs. We had four people in twenty nineteen that built ADUs. We have four entitled. As as Council Number One uh, recounted, we have four that are entitled as part of new development. So we've got, you know, we can. We can show you that we can build for ADUs per year, or at least get them permitted. I think SB nine is a little too fresh for us to make an assumption that a certain percentage of. Clayton property owners will subdivide their property, maybe in the next cycle. Because we'll have had eight years or seven years at that point of being able to say, well, look, look at what SB nine did. It built. You know, it resulted in twenty housing units per year. We might be able to make that argument, but I just I I think it's going to be a challenge with this cycle. And the newness of that legislation.
That letter we received with regard to the uh. Energy and trying to put more density within existing neighborhoods is a bit disturbing to me. Anyway.
I think there's a whole cultural shift that's happened the last two years relative to the pandemic that cannot be predicted as part of the cycle of planning. That's the challenge. Um, and how people will be working from home and and want to make improvements accordingly, that we just can't let put a statistical number on.
They just keep stacking legislation on top of legislation and we and we're always they're moving the goalposts and we can't catch up.
So let's getting back to this conversation, what we're doing tonight primarily is giving direction to the uh. City Council regarding goals, so they could put it to the to the planning commission. The planning commission commission will look at the goals. Um, they'll they'll wordsmith them as they feel is appropriate because they're going to turn those goals into policies. Um, and that that will need to follow from the policies that we're actually have to implementate implement the policies associated, as I understand correctly. The challenge is the fifth cycle really had no punitive action for not meeting the goals. And unfortunately, our state HCD has geared up with a enforcement division to go after those cities who are not. In compliance um, with the next arena cycle. And so we're going to be very cognizant that, you know, yes, Jeff, I would love to put some comment to meet minimally meet the. The requirements as they are legally, legally, but we just got to make sure that we're we're meeting those requirements. Um, because there will be punitive actions in the future associated with this.
If I may add finally. Uh, my and back to speaking to the goals, crisp them up. Limit the density. That's the end of my input.
Thanks, Councilmember Diaz. Appreciate that. Is there any other comments before we open this up for public comments? Yes, Dana, please.
Would you like me to address Council Number One's questions very quickly before you get to public comment?
I thought you, please do.
Okay, so I'm going to scroll through these rather quickly, Council Number One, um, because you listed quite a few. So I'll do the best I can to answer them as much as I can. So again, regarding attachment three and presenting the six hundred eighty five units, again, this is first pass. That that number may shift up or down. The council um. We'll we'll continue to get public feedback on that through the online survey and the uh, planning commission process.
Wait, can I interject for a sec? Is I guess the a better question to ask is, is it our intent to? For uh, to proffer a larger number of units than is required?
Well. I would, I would, as your staff, recommend that you have some level of buffer in whatever your ultimate. Unit count ends up being. Part of that is because realistically, you're going to have some developers who are going to want to build fewer units than what you envisioned. And if that happens, you're going to have to rebalance that. You're still going to have to demonstrate you can meet the minimum arena allocation. So. To give you some level of flexibility to allow. Less intense development than what's identified in your housing element inventory, you may want to give yourself that buffer. Now, how big a buffer doesn't, you know, right now, we're showing a hundred and fifteen units of buffer and they end up being less than that. But again, this map is just, uh, if we were to take all the sites and put as much density as we can on them, this is what we get. We may end up with a smaller buffer than that at the end of the process.
So, okay, so I think that answers my my question about that. It seems like it. There's a bit of discretion there, but this is just the first pass.
This is the first pass. Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Um, okay, I'm going to see if I captured everything else. You had a question about what are the zoning constraints of housing sites that were identified in the fourth and fifth cycles? If a site was identified in the fourth and the fifth housing element cycles, which were the cycles between two thousand seven and. Two thou and and now, so the last sixteen years. If those sites were identified, if a site was identified in both the fourth and the fifth cycle. But was unbuilt, uh, state law requires that it uh, be identified at a certain density. That would allow at least twenty percent of the units to be low income. That can be achieved by designating or zoning them for twenty units per acre. That's assumed to be low income.
Are there other ways to achieve that?
Possibly. I'd have to think about that a little bit more. Um, you'd have to codify it. Whatever you choose to do, you'd have to codify it as, you know, record some deed restriction that on the property that.
Okay, got it. So more difficult, more difficult.
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay. So the twenty percent low, yeah.
We will look with the with the consultants, we will look into what some different options might be.
But yeah, that would be that would be helpful as well. So the requirement then, just to clarify, if you're on the fourth and fifth cycle, so prior to cycles. And you are unbuilt. Then you are required to provide twenty percent. For low income and we satisfy that requirement with the thing. Okay. Okay. And when you say unbuilt, like. Does that mean it has to be a vacant property on the fourth and fifth cycle? Or it has to be a non-conforming property on the fourth and fifth cycle?
It means that no building permits were issued for housing. In either.
Oh, okay. I see. Okay, got it.
Um, you also had a question about could properties be zoned for more than twenty units per acre? Yes. Why are some less than twenty units per acre? So some of the sites that um, are identified. I don't remember the letters, but some of the sites that were identified were sites that were um, that are currently vacant. But for which. A development application was either approved or pending during this current cycle. We honored whatever the unit count was for that project. So the Olivia, for example, was approved during the this current housing or this fifth housing cycle for eighty one units. We honored that eighty one units in the inventory. Diablo Meadows. Was also identified in the fourth and fifth cycles. However. It was entitled by this city council. Last year in the fifth cycle for eighteen single family homes and three accessory dwelling units. So we honored that. So that's that's uh, and as well as if there if there was a pending application. Within the last cycle, we acknowledged that number as well.
Is that a requirement?
Short answer is yes. I mean, this is what the city council approved for those two sites.
But um, I guess you're you're um. You are. Treating uh, entitled property the same way as one that only has that's not entitled. And is there? So are you saying that it's? I understand that if something is entitled. That that those are the rules, right? So that that makes sense, even though. You theoretically, you could still upzone it and the entitlement will still hold. But. For something that's not entitled, why would that be given that deference?
I would try to draw, I would probably draw a parallel between this and um, Sequa. So with Sequa, when we're looking at projects, when we're doing analysis, accumulative analysis, we look at what's reasonably foreseeable. And we have to include that in the impacts of the project. If a project is an application is pending. It's reasonably foreseeable that that's what's going to be. Built or approved. It may not be, I don't know, but it's. We're not just making a number up. A property owner has approached the city with a request to build something. And it may change, but that's the best information we have as far as what could happen on a particular parcel.
Okay, I guess I, I'm not sure I see it the same way, but um, okay, I I take your response.
Okay. And those were all the questions I had written down. So I'm sorry if I missed any.
And so it sounds like downstream impacts regarding greater density. It doesn't seem, does that trigger anything if you do that? Like if you have, for example, if we have a a property. That we say, you know, this one really makes sense to have twenty five units per acre. Does that mean that other properties then need to go to that number? Is there any like triggering event?
Specifically answering your question, if you have a parcel that's zoned for twenty five units per acre, does everything have to be zoned for twenty five units per acre? Uh, no. Um, it depends on how you write your zoning classification.
Okay, yeah, because we don't have that right now. That doesn't exist anywhere um, within our code, right? So we'd have to write it in a way that. Is sufficiently narrow so as not to cause that if that was the desire.
Not sure I understand the question there.
Okay, yeah, it wasn't really a question, I guess. Yeah, I think that. And then did you cover AB thirteen ninety seven and the letter that we got?
I did not, but I'm just, I pulled up the bill very quickly and it it looks like it basically has to do with the housing inventory, which is. Your attachment three, you have to identify sites for accommodating your housing.
Yeah, but I think what they're saying is, are they saying, are they saying in different ways, the same way? Sorry, my mouse is somewhere else. What you said, I said.
So by right approval means you cannot require a conditional use permit for it.
Yeah. They say like we should remove site J for some reason, which doesn't seem accurate or consistent with what you had just said earlier. And then.
And this letter, um, we received it before the meeting, so we did want to share it with the group. But as I said, we're going to be coming coming back and we're, there's going to be a lot more information than just this letter coming in on the housing sites inventory. So. Um, I would, I would suggest.
Okay, I won't go into the details of this one then. Yeah, I guess.
Take a look at this letter in more detail with all the other information we get from people.
Okay, yeah, I I mean, it's it's not really fair to ask you to, I mean, this is somewhat of a dense letter. So I would say um. To the extent that when we are able to meet again and discuss this, if we could. Assess the. The merits of the letter and, you know, how accurate we feel it is.
Yeah, and we'll have a lot more information or feedback hopefully by then as well, from not just this letter.
Sounds good.
Is there any other comments? Are there any other comments from the council members?
Or or questions at this.
Questions at this questions at this point.
No.
If not, uh, let's open this up for public comment. Janet, do we have any hands raised?
Mayor Cloven, I do have one hand raised. Normal as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Nirmal Singh and I am a resident of Clayton. I attended Pine Hall of Menosco and Clayton Valley Charter High School. My family also runs a business near the Clayton Valley Shopping Center. I grew up in the city and I am proud to call it my home. But with the lack of affordable housing options near jobs and transit, I fear that my family and I will no longer be able to afford the increasing rent prices. Nor be able to become homeowners with the average home costing well over one million dollars. I believe this housing element is pivotal for creating a resilient, diverse and thriving community here in Clayton. I see that of the site identified in the preliminary six cycle sites, approximately seventy percent are recycled from. The fourth and or fifth cycle housing elements, specifically site J has been previously proposed in the fourth and fifth cycle. Two of these parcels are vacant greenfield sites. Given the pace of climate change. It is absolutely critical that we preserve our open spaces for climate benefits like carbon, sequestration and wildfire mitigation. And build denser housing in existing communities. We need to upzone and build affordable infill housing in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Additionally, the southern two parcels inside J are a thousand feet from an active quarry. I would like to recommend that site J be removed from consideration altogether. In terms of the draft goals, I think this is good start overall, but believe that there needs to be more language surrounding climate change. Such as manage the threat of climate risk on existing and future infrastructure and require nature based solutions for climate resilience. Being only twenty four, I hope that through just an ambitious planning efforts, I will one day be able to afford to raise a family of my own here in Clayton. I commend your efforts throughout this process and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Nirmal. I appreciate your comments. Janet, are there any other hands that are available for this for this conversation? Janet, are there any other hands that are available for this, for this conversation?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any other hands. Oh, one hand just went up. Roy, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Greetings, Roy. Welcome.
Yeah, hi. Um, I just joined, uh, actually, uh, the whole session altogether about, I don't know, ten, fifteen minutes ago. And I was able only capture um Dana's um big picture, you know, goals. Uh, and uh, just a quick thing in terms of uh, providing information that, that we can all see, I would suggest that uh, that, well, in this particular case, like Dana, if you could display or who are monitors or managers of the site here, the Zoom meeting that display, display, you know, for example, some of the things that we're, that we're, that you're all talking, that we're all talking about, that we all know about. Uh, specifically in this case, the goals, right? It would have been very easy, simple to just have a split screen and see it so we can track, follow. Uh, I haven't gotten in the weeds or seen the objectives altogether to this point in time. So anyway, I would suggest that, right? Make it easy for people to kind of track and then do any follow-up accordingly. Um, the second thing I would say is that, um, yeah, again, I only glanced at these things for a couple of minutes, you know, the, the time that they were up. And um, but it seems to me that the, the, the goals are, uh, you know, strategic in nature. And so they're not getting into the, you know, the, they're not tactical, so if I could say it that way. And I gather the planning commission will get into the weeds, et cetera. Um. But uh, the question, or the need that I have is that, you know, how did, how was the, how was the public getting, how, how did the community get engaged here? I mean, I heard a few comments from some of the, from you, from some of the council members here saying, well, we need to learn, we know, the public needs to get engaged like day one or from the get-go, I think with the expression you. Then what is that get-go? What is that day one? And what have, you know, what are you guys doing about that so that we, so one is engaged? Uh, so I don't know that, okay? I, I don't have a sense of urgency or, or not so much sense of urgency, but it's like, tell where can these things be seen? Um, that should be said, said on the front end, on the back end of this discussion today, so that people can readily get it. Uh, and, and begin to, you know, see them, uh, you know, these, I'm feel, I'm visualizing just strategic, you know, goals. And not, you know, not tactical in nature, but you know, I think Jeff had a lot of good questions and uh, kind of get in the weeds of the, of this. And I don't know what kind of, you know, work was done on the, at the council level with respect to doing the research, data analysis, blah, blah, blah. Okay, uh, so anyway, I'll, I'll stop there. Um, so help me out and uh, showing these things as you talk and not simply, you know, talk to them and really not have an opportunity actually to see them. It's a wonderful time to uh exploit technology, not only being able to see you, but also see information. Thanks.
Thank you, Roy. Appreciate your comments. Take that advisement. Our goal as a council and as a city is to inform as many people as possible and to get them involved. And we've got to think about creative ways to do that. So I will take that under advisement. Thank you.
Roy, I would recommend that you look at the agenda packet. It has the results of numerous outreach efforts um that was done over the past many weeks and months, so to see some of the efforts already that's taken place. And you could see the, what, uh, what the feedback has been thus far. There'll be more opportunity in the future. But if you want to see what's already happened, that'd be a good place to start.
Janet, are there any hands? People like to speak on this topic.
Yes, I have another speaker, Linda, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, hi there. This is uh Linda DeChambeau. I'm with Contra Costa County Climate Leaders. And um, I just want to uh commend you and appreciate this effort. General plan updates, I was a former mayor myself are, are critical and sit the blueprint for cities for the next ten to thirty years. And I just want to echo the concern, although it's easy to try to say we've done a lot of community output, but the comment made earlier about expressing the urgency is critical. To just say that you're doing a housing update doesn't really get across to the public, the urgency of getting involved and doing more of that on Nextdoor, using layman terms would really be great for getting more people involved. I also really appreciate the earlier comment about item six, uh, going a little bit further on the issue of energy, but I ask that uh you really take a close look for the, for the young man who spoke earlier um about your measurable goals regarding the climate crisis. Because other than transportation, the most important place that cities can address the climate crisis to lower greenhouse gases is in the built environment. So as the um planning commission takes a look at this, it'd be great if you could direct them to try to find opportunities to put in measurable opportunities for the built environment to be energy efficient, which will of course save um the future residents of those houses money in their, their bills, et cetera, getting them off the grid and providing a, um, a resilient future. So um, we, we appreciate uh the work you've done, we're, uh, we've joined other groups like Green Belt Alliance, working with other cities. And uh just commend you on your work and ask you to do everything you can to uh make sustainability and the climate crisis um front and center in your um planning as you go forward.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate that.
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
And with that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for comment. We've been asked specifically to um provide directions to staff regarding the draft housing element goals. I know personally, I could wordsmith a word or hear it too and, and, and make changes. But I think that that's going to be something that's, that the planning commission will do as part of their process. Um, and trying to figure out how those goals can be translated into policy and, and for implementation. So um, I'm, I'm good with the language as it is. I'm looking forward to seeing what it looks like when it comes back. That's my take. Any other comments from the council?
So are we giving guidance to the planning commission here? Or like what is the, what is the takeaway that um, Hannah, you are going to take from this to give back to the planning commission?
Well, again, this is your opportunity to give us comments. So if, just as the public has an opportunity to comment on the goals, if there are comments you would like to share at this point, um, this is, this is your opportunity. And this is not your last opportunity either. But uh, this is your first opportunity to comment on the goals.
Okay. I guess I, I don't need to reiterate my comments on the goals, but they, they remain unchanged um in that regard. So you can give that all the consideration that it deserves. Um, and then I guess the similar comments on the, the uh, attachment three here, um, which for the members at home is page one four, one forty-two of one hundred and seventy-two of the agenda that's online. Um, I do think, you know, it's, we can be, if we can upzone certain areas, you know, we are in the rare position where we actually own properties. So it's not like we're at the um discretion of a, of a owner that can then take that zoning and build. I mean, we can zone and then exercise our discretion as owners. Um, and we still satisfy the requirement. So that's a, that's a, that, that, that may be an avenue that we can take um within reason. So um, we own lots of property that is zoned here for lots of units. And if we make it just a little bit more, it releases the burden on other areas and then well, we get to decide if we actually want to do that. So uh, I would, I, I would try to be creative.
I look at this, Jeff, as a first grasp of where we are and uh creative thinking is going to be definitely be necessary in this process. And I'm looking forward to seeing that looks like over the next few months.
Yeah, the first pass always has inertia though. So you know, that's why I'd be cautious if you're going to put out a number that's gigantic. Because uh to overcome the inertia uh is, is more difficult than starting uh from anew. So I would just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
No, I didn't get to mine earlier.
Actually, what, yeah, sorry, I had one, sorry, I had one other one. Like, I guess it just goes back to the units. And so you had said that if something was on the fourth and sixth cycle, then it's required to have, oh, I, I think that's because, so for like item B, you're saying that because they have a pending application, that wasn't included in a higher number. Is that, is that, am I interpreting what you said correctly?
To figure out what, what.
Oh, sorry. Item B was Silver Oaks.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, correct.
Okay. Yeah, because that, that strikes me as a little strange, um, whether or not that's a requirement or that's just something that we've done. Um, you know, for their benefit. But, you know, it seems like when we, I think when you said what is reasonably foreseeable because they have a pending application, I think that um, doing it, taking that approach, I guess my, my, my comment would be that by taking that approach, it begs the question of approval. And approval is, is, is um not present, and therefore to assume that it would go is doesn't seem like the, an objective approach. So uh, I would say that, you know, that doesn't seem consistent with thing, with the way that we've done things in the past. But that's my comment.
Um, Mayor Cloven, can I?
Please do.
Very briefly, I think it's, I, I don't believe that I wouldn't say that showing a certain number of units on a site is committing or obligating the city to do something. I think what it's demonstrating though is that this is likely and we have a pending.
Wait, but how do you, but that doesn't, that's because they're.
This is possible. This is, this is what's possible. And, and this is what is, what the pro, current property owner would like to do with that site right now. I think we need to be cautious about presenting a site for which we have a pending application for thirty units. And then putting that in our site inventory for a hundred and twenty and asking HCD to accept that. Hey, this is going to be a hundred and twenty units, but you have this application over here that's pending. Maybe you won't approve it, but I, I think we, we, again, we need to be just aware of that, that we need to present what is a reasonable assumption and it may not be what happens. As you said, it may not be likely. But I, I think we, we, we don't want to misrepresent or over-represent what could happen with a site either. And we.
No, I agree. I agree. I agree with that. I, I don't know if I would go so far as to say that it's reasonable, a reasonable assumption, because that, that has to be based on something. Um, but I would say um, would the, what the owner's desire is is only ancillary. It's interesting, but not controlling. And therefore, like, you know, if we were to zone it differently and they come forward with an application that doesn't conform, then it would just be denied. I mean, that's easy. So, and then you have nothing, but you still have the units. So I, I mean, you know, um, now if an owner like, I know the folks at Oakhurst, um, you know, they, they do like for, I'm trying to look, I think that's item Q. You know, the folks at Oakhurst at item Q are like, yeah, let's do this. And so you probably get, you know, there's nothing, nothing doing there. That's a, that's a slam dunk. But um, you know, to the extent that there's a difference of desire between the owner and the city, I'm pretty sure I know which one's going to win in zoning. So you know, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't say it's like one way is like more likely than the other. Um, and to say that we're doing that, I don't, I'm just not really clear on what the legal reason is we would do it that way. It seems like it's a, we're, we're accommodating a desire, um, but not a requirement.
Um, Dana and Mr. Mayor, I, I've been quiet all night, but Dana, if you want me to expand on that just a little bit, um, to, to help, I'm council member one, understand that uh this is based on what HCD has been doing in Southern California for all of the housing elements that we've been working on there. And they have questioned anything that is not reflecting an active application. They said if there is an active application on the site, the presumption should be that that's what the designation for that site should be. So we, we are, uh, the way we're operating is based on the, the uh, lots of housing elements that we've done in Southern California and the presumption that HCD is going to continue to, to take that tack.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, is this, is their application considered active? I don't know if that's a defined term. I mean, it's not been, it's not a complete application at this point, right?
It is active.
So, yeah, so if we maybe want to bring this back to just any of the last feedback rather than a debate, because this is going to come back a bunch more times. So I don't necessarily want us to, um, you know, spend a lot of time uh, on something that's going to come back.
Again, it's the first look, Jeff, and I get those concerns. I have a lot of questions about the densities on certain parts, parcels that have been, are put in this map. It's just a first look. And we'll get a chance to look at it more and refine it more. And there'll be additional sites identified and densities will be evaluated as part of this process. Um, this is not what we're debating, the map that's here tonight. It's, it's here for a first bit of conversation. And I have a lot of questions about it that are irrelevant to our conversation tonight that I will be talking to about the staff and making sure it gets in other comments in the future. We're here to give direction on the goals and get, get, get to the planning commission so we get this thing kicked off and, and moving forward relative to the goals. And um, yeah, I, I got lots of questions about how, how we got to where we are, but that's um, not where we are right now, relative to the goals.
Well, I guess I would challenge that a little bit because it's not just about goals. I mean, yeah, we will have multiple opportunities for sure. But at each stage that things go and are unchallenged, they're going to gain inertia. And, and it's going to be much more difficult to change course as you go down the road. So if there's, like, if you have serious concerns, then you should raise them because at every opportunity, if you, if you forego an opportunity, I mean, it's almost complicit that, you know, that you, if you did not speak, you know, it's that whole, I don't know, I'm not going to say the whole thing. I, I mean, speak every time.
I have time to, to, to question some of the numbers that are put out there and have the densities. Um, I appreciate the effort that got us to this point and, and, and I will look forward to questioning each of the things that I have questions on. And parcels, A through S that have been identified. I appreciate the effort where we got here, but I definitely have a lot of questions still.
Oh, sure. I mean, a ton of work. I mean, no doubt. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to belittle the work that was done. There's, there's lots. Um, but you know, every time you have the, the chance, raise the flag. So.
I appreciate that and I will. I, I applaud it. But that, this, this is not the form at this point to, to question a specific parcel and its, and its, and its, its density allocation in this preliminary map. Um, we'll get there and I, I promise you, I will speak up and be loud uh about that. Yeah, we're, we're going to get there in the next couple of months as we start putting out this uh, uh, the map that actually the, the citizens get a chance to actually look with and play with it with the balancing act. That's the one I want to make sure it has got some, is a little more refined. And I'm going to have those conversations. Yes.
All right.
Any other questions? Is, does anybody have uh any um challenges with putting the goals as they're currently written with their comments from this meeting uh to the planning commission for them to proceed, proceed?
With their, with their chat, wait, can you say that again?
And then, well, we, we, you, you have comments, uh, Jeff. I, I, I wrote down notes on your comments. I've heard comments from, from Holly and others. Um, well, these are, these are comments that I, I think can be incorporated into a dialogue that gets presented to the uh planning commission. that gets presented to the, uh, planning commission along with the current goals. So my, uh, recommendation is we get the current goals along with our comments from tonight's meeting to the planning commission to consider them further. Is that, is that, is that appropriate, uh, direction, um, Dana?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
That's my recommendation. Uh, do, does that need to be a motion or is that a recommendation that it seems, uh, appropriate?
Sounds good.
Okay. Dana and Raina, you are, are you set for this item?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. And thank you to Dana and Laura for, um, all of their work, uh, so far and all the work to come.
Absolutely, yeah, and there's plenty of it.
Your head down.
With that, um, action item nine A regarding the sixth cycle, the housing element is complete. I'm gonna make a change in the agenda, um, and I would like to recess the current, uh, council meeting and convene the Oakhurst, uh, GAD, um, meeting, part of going to closed session. So, uh, Councilmember Diaz, if, if, um, you're up for it, I would like you to go ahead and, and, um, run the, uh, GAD, uh, um, meeting, uh, at this time.
I'm the chair, this is the chair of the GAD, calling a meeting to order at nine fifty-one PM. And with the district secretary, please call roll.
Board Member Tillman?
Here.
Board Member Juan?
Here.
Board Member Cloven?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Wolf?
Here.
Chair Diaz.
Here. All right, moving on to item two, public comment. Uh, this is for something that is not on tonight's agenda. And I opened it now for public, uh, comment and I'm gonna look and see if we have anybody that wishes to speak on any of the things that are not on the item, our agenda.
Uh, Chair Diaz, I do not show any hands raised on this item.
Thank you. I'm closing the public comment and, uh, moving on to, uh, the consent calendar, item three. And, uh, anybody wishes to discuss any of those? Pull them.
Uh, Chair Diaz, if I could just make the same correction that I made for the Harris, uh, agreement on the main agenda. Um, we will correct all the dates to be consistent with one another to March thirty.
Thank you. All right, we will do that. And now I'm gonna open up for the discussion, uh, by the board. Anybody wish to address any of these items? Hearing none, I will open it up for public comment and we'll look and see if we have anybody wishing to address this item.
Chair Diaz, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Then I am closing the public comment on this item and, uh, we will move for a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, so.
Moving seconded, please call roll.
Board Member Tillman?
Hi.
Board Member Juan?
Hi.
Board Member Cloven?
Hi.
Vice Chair Wolf?
Yes.
Chair Diaz.
Yes. All right, moving on to item four, public hearing, there are none, uh, action items, there are none. Board items for future meetings, open.
I would make the same request as I did in the prior six meetings or seven meetings. It's in the minutes from the prior meeting as well.
Okay. Anybody else? That will conclude, uh, the board items for future meetings. We will adjourn and the time is nine fifty-three.
Thank you, Chair Diaz.
It was a long one.
Concise and to the point and brief.
You got it done.
Well done.
All right, we will recon, uh, close the meeting, meeting is closed for the GAD conversation. We will reconvene the, uh, city council meeting. At this point, we're gonna go into a closed session. Uh, this is item ten, um, for, for labor negotiations. Uh, we were gonna be leaving and we will come back upon close, the finishing of the closed session. Excellent, and we'll see you all in a little bit.
Greetings, we are back from closed session. We have three of the five of us here available to close this out. Am I muted?
No, you're fine.
Okay. We have action. No reportable action is from the meeting. And we'll look forward to talking at another time on that. Hang on. I think the left is council items for future agenda. Are there, and this is item on the agenda number 11. Are there any council items for future agendas to be brought forward?
I don't have, I forgot to say something during my report. And I don't have anything for this. I'm sorry if I'm out of order, but I want to let everybody know that Saturday at nine o'clock in the morning, CBCA needs volunteers downtown to help take down the decorations. So if you have a couple of hours from nine to 11:00 in the morning on Saturday, they need people downtown.
Thank you.
Sorry. I forgot to do that earlier.
All right. With no other items on for future council consideration, we will close item number 11 and go to item number 12 with adjournment at 10:33 PM.